Good evening, good evening everyone. We're gonna go ahead and start. If you can find a seat, please go ahead and sit down. If not, it might be standing only option. Sorry. Okay. All right, we are re-entering open session at 7:30 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Member Dr. Lopez?
Here.
Member Dr. Ko?
Here.
Member Noak?
Here.
Member Dr. Farzany?
Here.
Member Fling?
Here.
Member Jacobs?
Here.
Member Abraham?
Here. Hey, does any board member want to make a change or an addition to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to separate Agenda Item E and make that a separate discussion and vote point.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we will go ahead and move to public comment. So we will now proceed to public comment. We will hear in-person comments in the order that they were received. Each individual will have up to three minutes for their comment. The Board Secretary, Dr. Lopez, will let you know when your time has expired. Public comments will proceed for one hour. Electronically submitted comments will be read to the Board if time allows. All electronically submitted comments have been provided to the Board and posted on the website. And I will go ahead and read your name, and as soon as I read your name, you can step up to the podium and start with your comments. Okay, the first person is Atisha Doughty.
Thank you. Good evening, this is on, okay. Good evening, Board members. I truly enjoyed open house to meet my son's teacher about a month ago. I was looking forward to returning to school to meet with them again for parent-teacher conferences. However, that will not be happening since they will be on Zoom. I got, I got it, Zoom, such ease and convenience. Click and you're there. It would have been nice to let parents have a choice as to what works best for their family. A Zoom conference or in-person conferences. In the future, when making decisions, please be aware who will be on the receiving end of that decision because clearly a Zoom conference is not my first choice, and I know I'm not alone. Also, I'd like to speak about the nightmare of a drop-off in the back lot. I feel it's an accident waiting to happen. I see cars exiting the lot, going north, cutting in front of cars entering the lot from the south. Any day, I feel there could be a car crash because I'm seeing crazy driving, exiting and entering. You're probably thinking, well, put your kid on the bus. Not an option. Leave early to avoid traffic. Not an option either, as I drop my other child off at another school. Even though the timeframe of drop-off is probably no more than 15 minutes at its busiest time, I feel it's a recipe for disaster. And it will only get worse when the weather gets colder and more families are dropping off. I'm requesting either the school district hire a Skokie Community Service Officer or have Officer Larson help out in direct traffic for a smoother drop-off. If we are collectively looking out for the safety of our families, something needs to be done. Please help end the drop-off nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Mary Shimon.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Mary Shimon, and I'm a junior at Niles North High School. As an indigenous Assyrian, I'm here to support the Assyrian Culture and Language Course proposal. The proposal of this course is significant because it shows that us Assyrians today are trying to further understand our culture and make it more well-known. It's important to me because it shows that we aren't forgetting about the culture and its people and how we've gotten here today. Not only is this course teaching Assyrians more about who they are, it's giving non-Assyrians the opportunity to learn our culture and what's so special about us. Thank you for listening to student voices and needs.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Christina Bureau.
Hello and good evening. My name is Christina Bureau, and I'm a ninth grader at Niles North High School. I'm aware that tonight the District Board will be discussing whether or not to offer an Assyrian course as an accredited language class. And as an Assyrian student, I would like to share my thoughts on why an Assyrian class is important. First off, growing up in Skokie, which is home to many Assyrians, there were very few opportunities to take an Assyrian class to learn the language and the background of it. And even then, those little opportunities are mostly limited to younger children. So hopefully in the near future, having an Assyrian class in Niles North and Niles West can bring new learning opportunities to the Assyrian community and others who are interested in our language and culture. Now, taking an Assyrian class is important for the district and their students because it will allow the Assyrian community to share our beautiful and unique culture with others who may not understand who we are as well. Additionally, Assyrian is a disappearing language and culture. This class will allow us to strengthen our identity and our understanding of who we are. It will give us a chance to learn things that we cannot find anywhere else, and I hope that District 219 will give us this unique opportunity. I know that many of my friends in Niles North, including those who are not Assyrian, are very excited about a class like this and are interested in taking it. I hope that Assyrian will be an option for my friends and I when it comes to sign up for classes next year. And as a student, I respectfully ask that you consider how much the, how, sorry, how much this class will benefit our district and how important it is for students, especially Assyrian students. I hope that you vote to approve this class, and when you do, I hope that you know that many of your students are grateful for your support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, our next commenter is Ramina Corkis.
Shlama, alohun, or hello. My name is Ramina Corkis. I'm a student leader at Niles North and a student, I am a student at Niles North and a student leader from the Assyrian Club at Niles North. I'm here as an Assyrian student to show my appreciation for the Assyrian Culture and Language Course. Having this course as an option next year would mean that as a student, I would finally have an opportunity to learn about my ancient language and culture which have made great contributions to the advancements of society worldwide. I would have more, I would have more learning opportunities to connect with my family members and peers through learning of culturally relevant materials. How we tun basimar al ba, or thank you to the administrators and staff for listening to our needs. We dearly appreciate you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Janet Askaria.
Shlama, alohun. It means hi, Board member. My name is Janet Askaria. I work as a family liaison for District 219. Our role is to work as that bridge that can communicate the family's concerns and questions to the specific teachers, staff member, and administrators. We help families that their English is not their first language and have language barriers to feel included in what's happening in school and with their child's learning. A parent with language difficulties may debate whether or not to reach out with any problem or concern they have. However, when they know there is a person or a staff member that can speak their language and understand their culture, they won't give second thought about reaching out for help. Clear communication between school and parents is the key to building a better and healthier learning environment for the student and aid them in improving their performance in school. Additionally, the student will become more involved in the school, which encourage them to become leaders and bring change to their community. Living as an Assyrian family, we encounter a lot of challenges and unjust treatment back home, such as not being allowed to practice our religion and culture freely, and anxiety from the fear of authority figures, not allowed to voice our worries and concerns. It has a lot of setbacks and always banned us from feeling comfortable to approach the school and the community. Bringing this course into our district can help a lot in releasing a huge burden of our shoulders and feel welcomed and included. On the behalf of myself, as a mother of three graduates from Niles West and one current junior, and on behalf of all our Assyrian families, I would like to thank you all from the bottom of my heart and their heart, and would like to appreciate all the effort you put in making this most important dreams come true. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next commenter is John Schlemmon.
Hello, my name is Josh Schlemmon, and I'm a sophomore at Niles North High School. I merely express my excitement for the Assyrian Culture and Language Course proposal. As an Assyrian who has pride in his Assyrian heritage, the approval of this course, of this course would be very meaningful to me because many people Assyrian and non-Assyrian are unaware of our culture and language. I believe that in our community, to understand, respect, and respect one another, we must be aware of each other's culture. This class would allow us to spread our culture and be proud of it. Thanks to the Board of Education, Administration of District 219, student representatives, and community members for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Sise David.
Shlama, or hi to everyone here. My name is Sise David, and I work for District 219 as a paraprofessional in the ILL Department of Niles North. My youngest child, which is Josh Schlemmon, previous, the one who attacked before me, is a student in Niles North right now, along with two of my nephews, and a total of 15 of my nieces, nephews, and children have graduated from Niles North. This is only a small representation of the Assyrian student population in the district, which is an even smaller representation of the Assyrian population in the area. Creating the Assyrian language class is an incredible way of educating both Assyrian children and other communities within the district about our language. Language is the backbone of culture, and our culture is one that needs more attention from kindness from the world, and an Assyrian language class is the perfect way to initiate that change. The creation of this Assyrian language class will create the best opportunity for students wishing to learn the language to accomplish that goal. One of main ways that students are currently learning Assyrian is through Assyrian churches in the area. This is not a viable option for all Assyrian students due to their personal time and resources constraints, and even less of an option for students of different cultural backgrounds. I hope that these impacts on the district through the creation of an Assyrian class are enough to show the Board that an additional language class is essential to fostering positive attitude, attitudes towards different cultures. And I'd like to thank all of you to listen to our concerning about having this class open and for your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Ramina David.
Shlama. Hello, my name is Rumiana David, and I am a Niles North High School alum. I have had cousins attend Niles North. I currently have cousins that attend Niles North, and I will have cousins that will attend Niles North in the future. I immigrated to the US in 2004. I grew up in Skokie and have always appreciated growing up in a diverse community and having attended great schools. I am proud to have attended Niles North High School for the great teachers I had, great after-school activities I was able to take part in, and the diversity of the student body that allowed me to learn about many other cultures. Niles North High School District 219 strives itself on its diversity and multiculturalism. There are currently 90 languages spoken at District 219, a number that has grown since I attended Niles North. The Board has a chance to prove to its students and community they value and stand for inclusivity, especially for a minority group that represents a significant percentage of the district population. Assyrian students represent an estimated 30% of the student body at this district. The Assyrian language is one of the oldest languages in the world, but unfortunately, there are challenges in the preservation of the language in the diaspora. The approval of the Assyrian Language and Culture Class can help in the preservation of the Assyrian language and culture in the diaspora. Arguments have been made that approving this class may take away from other world language classes. Although I understand that argument, I urge the Board to see the unfairness that this argument poses to the estimated 30% of students that identify as Assyrians and the large Assyrian community within Niles Township. Additionally, this argument can be used for any new classes that would want to be added in the future. I urge and hope that Board votes in favor of approving an Assyrian Language and Culture Course to the curriculum, and in doing so, becoming the first public school district in the United States to offer Assyrian language as a world language. I want to thank you, the Board, for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Diala David. You know what, we'll move on to the next one. We'll go back to her later. All right, the next person I'm gonna call is Charlene Abraham.
Good evening. My name is Charlene Abraham. I'm a parent of two students at Niles North. I'd like to thank the Board of Education for hearing us this evening, and I would like to express my, my positive consideration for this very pivotal moment for the Assyrian community. This is not only for the Assyrian community, but for our entire nation to see a historic moment like this pass. And it would not have happened without the tireless work of the people standing before me here and the efforts that they have made. With that said, you have heard our voices, and we thank you for that, and we hope that you will consider this, again, not only a historic moment for the District 219, but nationwide. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, I don't see Diala. I know Diala, and I'm not seeing her, so I'm gonna move on to the next person. Gabriel Dawud.
Good evening, members of the D219 Board and everyone in attendance. My name is Gabriel Dawud. I'm a senior at Niles West and an active member of the Assyrian community here in the district. I would like to start off by thanking you for giving me this opportunity to express what the Assyrian Language and Culture Class would mean to me. I truly believe that it is imperative that D219 adds this course to our curriculum. Our district is known for upholding a sense of excellence in our schools. Therefore, through the Assyrian Language elective, we as a district can further enhance this image by providing our students with more learning opportunities. This addition means that students would receive a wider variety of language options due to Assyrian being from a completely different language family than the current selection at West. Further celebrating our unique diversity, Assyrian is known for being an advanced ancient language and will allow students to broaden their linguistic horizons, whether they are of Assyrian descent or not. Niles West and Niles North both have very large Assyrian populations. Although large in size in the Chicagoland area, Assyrians are one of the smallest minority groups, not just in America, but in the world. Because of this, we are prone to losing grip on our culture and language, and we continuously suffer from feelings of displacement. To combat this and make the Assyrian students of D219 feel more at home, the Assyrian language is a simple yet effective solution. This has the potential to positively impact many generations of Assyrian Americans to come. Not allowing this class in our curriculum, I feel, would be a disservice to the Assyrian community here at West and North. Not only do we as Assyrian students want to be seen, we also want to be heard. I've asked some of my peers at Assyrian Club to share their thoughts on the Assyrian Language Class, and the member I asked does not have an Assyrian background, however, expresses a very heavy interest in our culture. Here's what he had to say. "I have only been in Assyrian Club for one day, and I already think the concept of it is amazing. In language classes, you learn about the culture too, so you know how to talk in certain situations. Cultures you don't know about are fun to learn and experience a little for yourself. People like to, people like to expand their opinions a lot, and one of those options includes language and culture." "To conclude, not only will this benefit D219 as an establishment, it will also benefit the students that make it up. On behalf of my fellow Assyrian students and myself, I thank you for your time and consideration in making this historic moment come to life. Thank you."
Thank you. Our next commenter is Dylan Chaco.
Good evening. Is this, can you hear me? Okay. Good evening. I am not really one for speeches, as you'll come to see, but I'll try. So I'm also speaking in regard to the Assyrian Language Course. I come from a pretty unique perspective because I'm a little bit of everything to the district. I'm an alum, I'm a current employee of the district, and I actually have relatives both prior to me coming and after my graduation who are students in the district. So this district really is in my vested interests from pretty much all aspects of my life, personal, professional, everything. That being said, as a member of the district in all those aspects of my life, it makes me very grateful to think of the opportunities that future generations of Assyrian students are gonna get that weren't really available to me at the time that I was a student. Makes me think about a lot of the misconceptions that people had about me, about my language, about my background, things that I didn't really have any way of disproving at the time, and things that can all be undone if the course becomes a reality. It also makes me think of the significant disadvantage that I was in at the time, that I and my Assyrian peers were in when it came to learning the language because as some people who came before me said, there aren't that many opportunities, and especially none that come to mind for people in the high school age and above. Makes me happy that future generations won't have to endure that. And the thing that really moves me about it is that my parents, growing up, really put it into my head and my siblings' head when we were children that, you know, we come from a place where there's a very active effort to suppress the language, to suppress the culture, to basically wipe our culture out of existence. And it was always weird to me to grow up in a place where, or in a community, I should say, where we, that effort to suppress us wasn't happening, but I still felt like we weren't really that much better off in terms of how many people speak the language, how many people know about us, like how many, you know, non-Assyrians know about us and our culture. And it really just makes me grateful to see District 219 as being, again, as my former school, my current employer, the current school and former school of a lot of my relatives and friends. To see District 219 as really the first public institution to be undoing that, to be undoing the suppression that we've undergone, like I said, in our homeland and also here, because we've also struggled to maintain the language here. Just a final thought, as an Assyrian who works in education, it also makes me very happy to see that Assyrian speakers who also, like other Assyrian speakers who work in education, are gonna now have an outlet to put their skills to use and train other Assyrians who want to get into education to also do that later on in their careers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Bishop Margie Vargas Yonan.
Hi, good evening. I'm very thankful to the District Board for giving us the opportunity to speak. I'm pretty sure you know what I'm gonna talk about. I'm gonna be talking about the Assyrian Language and Culture Course and how important it is and how prepared it is for us as the Assyrian community for this to take place. First off, it's going to be a very historic moment for us as an Assyrian community to have such a course be official and in the schools. As you all have heard many times over, language is the foundation for every culture. We, as an Assyrian people, and pretty much everybody who is a, who lives in this district and all the families that come here, have all come from countries due to persecution, especially when it came to our culture and our language. And we have come here, and we are thankful that we are, that we are able to create a life for ourselves here. But at the same time, it is very important for us to maintain our culture at the same while, while still learning about other cultures here, which is why it's important for us to maintain our language. And having this course will help many families here to keep the Assyrian language alive, at the same time, keep our culture alive, to maintain our culture and move it forward. In our countries where we come from, in the Middle East, especially when it came to language, we were prohibited from teaching the Assyrian language in the schools there. As much as we tried, they would not allow it, and many times, even when we opened up our own schools, they would shut down the schools. We don't want to necessarily see that here. We're thankful that it's made it this far, and I'm confident that the District Board is gonna make the right decision in order to allow us to further feel at home in this country so that our country, our children coming up are able to still speak the language and maintain all the traditions that our forefathers had. I mean, being one of the many religious leaders here for a very vast and growing community, we know the trials that we're facing due to the loss of language, and we're thankful to you for making the correct decision and helping us in maintaining our language and our culture. Thank you so much.
Our next commenter is Attra Sargon.
Thank you, shlama. Good evening, everyone. My name is Attra Sargon. I'm a proud alumni of Niles West School and a trustee in the village of Lincolnwood. I'm also the vice chair of the Assyrian Policy Institute, a nonprofit organization that works to bring Assyrian-American voices and perspectives to important discussions such as these. I'd like to start by expressing our organization's full support for the proposed Assyrian Language Course that will be discussed as part of tonight's agenda. As you well know, the fact that this course is even being considered tonight is owed to years of advocacy by Assyrian community members, including staff and students, some of whom have long since graduated, but hope to see others offered this opportunity that they themselves did not have. I would also like to commend the tremendous leadership of Caroline Benjamin, Ramina Samuel, and William Sargul, without whom we simply would not be here today. I'd also like to add that we remain deeply grateful to the leadership shown by Dr. Sandra Aragine and April Salworth in prioritizing community voices and helping advance discussions on this proposed course. This Board of Education has heard a lot from the Assyrian community over the years concerning the need for this course amid the many challenges and barriers faced by our community in retaining our language and accessing cultural resources. You heard from the students here tonight who spoke from their hearts. The option for Assyrian language instruction at the high school remains a high priority for Assyrian Americans, not just here in District 219, but across Illinois and nationwide. and nationwide. District two nineteen is poised to become the first public secondary school district to offer Assyrian as an accredited world language. So many people are looking to this board to set a precedent for schools across the country. I know I speak for many who also graduated from D two nineteen schools when I say that I would be immensely proud to see our district be a leader on this issue. Like many here today, I am optimistic that this board understands the value of this course, and I urge you all to vote in a manner that is equitable, inclusive, and informed. As you make your decision, please consider how this course can promote District two nineteen's values of diversity and inclusion, and beyond that, how it can be transformative in the lives of Assyrian students now and for years to come. Thank you, Basim Raba.
Thank you. Our next commenter is William Sargul.
Hamzam ti b'toyab lishana aturaya. Min di kamaya et li tontet minta min ahasit hareshmeteh, the District two nineteen. Haewitun basim raba tshkillochun min daanochun. Et mashmietun labes el rabianeh awahatheh dina amman idyom yoma ina buj zoda al dene esku laye bricheh. Anin khetela et mashmich el esku layen sebba b'ani ina da'fid. Labes esku laye aturaya. Ina kulle esku laye dina mdrashate bricheh. Do zutha ahi lacha xilma qadi. Ano win, ano win wachha esku laye go madrashet Niles West. Lehtach min inwet kal inwet lacha idyom yoma kamochun. B'tlabe win tamamietun aha xilma. Et hawi maqretet lishana aturaya go dene madrashateh. B'tlabe wachtiawitun kalochun la qali. Ula qah awahathet dene yaleh ina qadene esku laye bricheh dina kamochun. Ub'tchat minna, ub'tchat minna hamzamta b'chakamen surta. Isa bin Yamin, who was an Iranian Assyrian calligraphist and educator, he said, "Our language is the reason for our existence." Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Ramina Samuel.
My name is Ramina Samuel, and I'm a school counselor at Niles North and a co-sponsor for our school's Assyrian Club and the district's Assyrian parent group, known as Surayeh. I am here to voice my support for our district to offer Assyrian language and culture courses. I would like to thank the administrators who gave our parents and students a space to voice their needs and interests. These equity spaces have shown that representation matters, whether on a parent or student or staff level, to work towards an equitable environment for our kids. I hope that our district can continue these efforts and uplift more voices. I am also thankful for the staff that have acknowledged the need and supported this move. As an advocate for Assyrian families, I can confidently say that we have been and will continue to be a part of this community. It is about time to offer a space for Assyrians and non-Assyrians to learn about the culture and language through public education. Through these efforts, we hope that this is a step towards the community being reflected in the curriculum to recognize their contributions. Basim Raba.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Caroline Benjamin.
Trying not to choke up after. Okay, Shlama, good evening, Board of Education Administration colleagues and my fellow community members. My name is Caroline Benjamin. This is my 10th year in the position as Director of Student Activities, and so proud of the work we do as a district to elevate student voices. In 2015, in collaboration with Carmen Albazie, World Language and EL Department Administrative Assistant, we created an Assyrian Parent and Guardians Group, which we named Surayeh. In 2015, a request came from one of the caregivers of this group, asking for a list of ways their student and themselves could be seen and heard. One of the requests was to create an Assyrian language and culture course. Seven years later, seven years later, from that initial request, I'm so proud to be a part of a team that has advocated relentlessly with steadfast commitment to the Assyrian identity in the face of adversity. You see, as an Assyrian people, for those who aren't familiar with the history, we are accustomed to staying resilient during times of challenge. A language approval means so much more than a list of world language offerings on paper. The language, Assyrian language and culture course approval means I, along with the estimated 20 to 30% of our Assyrian community across the district feel heard and seen. It is not only a preservation of language, it is a preservation and uplifting of an identity that has too often felt dismissed, unheard, excuse me, or ignored. By approving this language course, our students, our families will be able to share and connect with the beautiful, rich, and unique culture that exists within our own, in a way that will showcase pride, translate into all aspects of school, academic, behavioral, overall engagement by Assyrians. By approving the Assyrian culture and language class, we are creating a bridge of non-Assyrians to Assyrians, and we are so grateful for our allies who stand in solidarity with our voices. Thank you for your consideration and recognizing the needs of the community you serve. Basim Raba.
Our next commenter is Rita Shamo.
Sorry, how do you follow that? Good evening. My name is Rita Shamo. I am an academic advocate in the Student Services Department at Niles West, and I'm also co-sponsor to the Assyrian Club at West. I'm here tonight to show my gratitude and my support for the Assyrian language and culture class proposal that has been presented. I'm truly grateful to witness this historic event finally unfolding after many years of attempt. I hear it from my students quite often that they would love to have an Assyrian language class available to them. Many of our Assyrian students want to learn more about their culture, and for District two nineteen to offer this class as a world language option would really benefit them and their non-Assyrian peers that show interest in our culture. I am proud to be a part of a team that is fighting to keep their culture alive. Members of the board, I thank you for leading a pathway so that one day my own children, who attend another district, like 50 miles away, almost 40 miles away, are able to choose a Syrian language and culture as one of their classes when registering for their own. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next commenter is Suzie Shaba. Shaba, sorry.
Dear members of the board, my name is Suzie Shaba, and I am a special education teacher at Niles West. I have been a teacher for five years, with this year being my first in the district. As an Assyrian American, I am beyond proud of the efforts put forward by my colleagues to bring out such a historical moment. As a Niles North alum, I take pride in being a product of two nineteen so much that I looked for an open teaching position here every year since I graduated college. Thankfully, I'm here now at a time where I can see my own community flourish. As I reflect on my own experiences as a student, I wish I had the opportunity to take a class that would allow me to dig deeper into my own roots, culture, heritage, and language, also so that I could have understood what Mr. Sargul said. Providing an opportunity for our student population to learn about this Syrian culture will promote a stronger sense of identity within the community. When I was a student, that was something I struggled with the most, and I know that our students feel the same way. It is in our best, it is in our students' best interest to show them that their culture matters, that their language matters, and that they matter, and this class would be one step forward in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Diala back, or no? Okay, we're just gonna move on then. Our next commenter is Sidney Stein.
Kudos and great idea to get the Assyrian language and culture into our, into our World Languages Department. Good evening. My name is Sid Stein. I'm a parent of a D two nineteen sophomore, certified teacher in history, ESL English, and Hebrew, and I've worked at both Niles North and Niles West. I was asked by a group of concerned parents months ago to run for the school board, which I will be doing in the April 2023 election. My website is citizid.org. My platform will include the fight against antisemitism, or let's call it what it is, Jew hatred, and to combat the perception that's prevalent in the Jewish community that Jews don't count in District two nineteen. Examples from this from the last year include the Gaza T-shirts from the Middle East Club that was created with the help of a Niles West School counselor that wrongly blames Israel, the Jewish state, for the dire situation in Gaza. Further, Jewish-American Heritage Month last May was never acknowledged, while other ethnic groups' months were, despite the fact that the village of Skoki is 30% Jewish. In addition, a school board member was allowed to wear a political symbol around her neck while handing out diplomas at last spring's graduation ceremony, and if not in intent, the effect was to bully and intimidate Jewish and Israeli students. I filed the Title VI violations in reference to this act. I will advocate to remove divisive politics in our schools. Terms such as microaggressions are more political than educational nature, and the vast resources being expended in this misguided endeavor is troubling, to be honest. Finally, physical safety and security were sorely lacking in the previous school year. With both staff and students feeling unsafe, I myself stopped stubbing at Niles West last January due to the situation. While the situation has seemed to improve with the new superintendent, Dr. Tom Moore, and with Niles West graduate and retired FBI agent Dave Young being head of security in Niles West, the people in place, to be honest, who let this situation deteriorate are still in place. We need to have a close cooperation with the Skoki Police Department. Anyway, if these issues have resonated with you, please give me your support. I am citizid.org, and God bless Skoki and these United States, and a special mention of Shana Tova. Happy New Year, and the Hebrew year, chameh shavemot shmonim ve'usholosh, because Jewish people count too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and Happy New Year. Okay, that ends my list for commenters. I want to thank all of our visitors for their comments. We will move on to the regular agenda items for now. I don't know if you all want to stay here if you have homework, because we're gonna be here for a couple of hours, but you are more than welcome to stay if you choose to. Thank you.
Should we take the photo?
Sorry, can we have some, we're gonna continue on?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so may I have a motion to move forward with the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. May I have a roll call?
Member Fling?
Yep, yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Noak?
Yes.
Member Dr. Barzene?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. All right. Our first item, may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the policy changes as presented?
Oh, the consent agenda?
No, agenda.
You have to do the consent agenda?
Yeah, so I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept donation of $500 from Mr. Barry Berger of Niles West High School over the next 10 years. The reason why I requested for this item to be a standalone item is to acknowledge and thank Mr. Barry Berger for his generous and outstanding gift to Niles West. I don't know if Mr. Berger is here.
No.
No.
Member Noak, can I just clarify? Did I hear you say, what was the amount again?
Half a million dollars.
Okay, yeah, I thought I heard $500.
$500,000. So, yeah, I just, I just wanted to thank, I want to thank him on behalf of the future students, that his gift is going to help, and that's basically it. I'm looking forward to seeing how it's utilized.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's enormously generous, and as Mr. Noak said, it's on behalf of the entire board, we are grateful. Thank you. All right. So we're gonna go ahead and move on? Okay, roll call.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Noak?
Yes.
Member Dr. Barzene?
Yes.
Member Fling?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. All right, now we're gonna move on to policy. We're gonna have a discussion, and that's gonna be you, right? Mr. Moore?
It is.
All right.
Since it's the second reading...
All right, sorry, can we have some? Can, we're gonna continue on? All right. Okay, so may I have a motion to move forward with the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, may I have a roll call?
Member Flink?
Yep, yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Noak?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. All right, our first item, may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the policy changes as presented?
Oh, the consent agenda?
No, agenda.
You have to do the consent agenda?
Yeah, so, um, I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept donation of five hundred dollars from Mr. Barry Berger of Niles West High School over the next ten years. The reason why I requested for this item to be a standalone item is to acknowledge and thank, uh, Mr. Barry Berger for his generous and outstanding, uh, gift to Niles West. I don't know if Mr. Berger is here.
No?
Member Noak, can I just clarify? Did I hear you say, what was the amount again?
Um, half a million.
Okay, yeah, I thought I heard five hundred dollars.
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand.
So, yeah, I just, I just wanted to thank, I want to thank him on behalf of the future students, that his gift is going to help, and, um, that's basically it. I'm looking forward to seeing how it's utilized.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's enormously generous, and, um, as, um, Mr. Noak said, it's on behalf of the entire board, we are grateful. Thank you. All right, um, so we're gonna go ahead and move on? Okay, roll call?
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Noak?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. All right, now we're gonna move on to policy. We're gonna have a discussion, and that's gonna be you, right? Mr. Moore?
It is.
All right.
Since it's the second reading, um, I, I was trusted with it. Really, none of the changes are substantive, um, updating legal references, and, um, the biggest one, probably the last one, you'll see the Anaphylaxis Prevention and Response and Management Program, um, which is update pursuant to ISBE guidance and to, um, stay current with Food Allergen Anaphylaxis Network. As I myself am a father to a son who grew up with severe egg, dairy, tree nut, and peanut allergies, I know how important this is, and we want to make sure we're doing everything we can to keep all of our kids safe. So this just reflects that, but no significant shifts.
Awesome. Did anybody have any comments or questions? All right, may I have a roll call?
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we need a motion.
Oh, may I have a motion first? Sorry, I thought I asked that, but nope.
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
All right, now we're gonna go for a roll call.
Apologies. Member Dr. Ko?
Yes, again.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Noak?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. Next, we have a discussion and action for Nespot, it's Inspire CX two CAS math calculators for all students. May I have a motion, please?
I have a quick, quick.
Oh, go ahead.
Some disc, oh, sorry, motion goes first, sorry.
Yes, so moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, and some, you had a question?
Yeah, discussion. Um, looking at the, uh, approximation, uh, they had, uh, approximated twenty-five percent, which ended up being four hundred and thirty-four out of the seventeen hundred and eighty-five students that were enrolled in these courses that, uh, qualified for the free and reduced. Just a quick question, I mean, I'm assuming it's just for, just extras, uh, if they break or anything else, but two eighty versus two hundred? So, um, I'm, I just also wanted to ask, um, this, uh, overall approximation was for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. Uh, did you have any, uh, other data from previous years to look at, see if that number is increasing, decreasing? What does that rate look like? And is that the reason why we're getting four hundred and eighty versus four hundred and thirty-four?
So, as, as far as our enrollment goes, our enrollment has maintained a relatively flat amount. We, at Niles West, we see about six hundred students coming in, uh, on average. In terms of the amount, that is our amount, our starting amount, based on the numbers we have pulled there, we will continue to budget for things like break, damage, replacement, and other items.
Another thing I want to point out is that those numbers can change throughout the year. Families go through different circumstances, so we want to be prepared for that as well. Um, so we do overestimate for those reasons. Another thing that I want to commend my colleagues here for is that a few years back, to reduce, um, the have, for students having to come forward and say that they were in a situation or financial difficulty, that is no longer something that students have to demonstrate. Students just come to them, to their department, they say they need a calculator, no questions asked, they're given one. So, um, that is a very important thing, a very important change that I want to make sure is recognized because of some of the practices we've had in schooling historically that do, um, perhaps bring shame to a student and, uh, will not, they will not ask for something that they need because of it.
Thank you for the clarification. Then, kind of just going off of what you had said, Dr. Adigun, uh, do you expect four hundred and eighty to be enough calculators? I mean, because there are, I, I do understand there are some certain, uh, instances where kids or people fall through the cracks and they might not qualify for the right requirements to fulfill that. So, you know, do you not, do you expect to not exceed that four hundred and eighty number, or?
I mean, we're, we're basically asking to replace all the calculators we currently have with the TI Inspires. So, and the calculators that we currently have, I mean, we typically will get close to the total number checked out, but not over that. So we're basically just asking to replace what we currently have with the newer model. So we would expect that that should be sufficient. If, if we, if we thought we needed more, we would have asked for more.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
If I could, one, I think, Dr. Ko, and I appreciate the question, I don't think this is going to be a reoccurring question. I've had the good, I've, I actually took a pilot of the new digital SAT last time I was at a college board meeting, and the calculator's now embedded into the test. Now that won't be available for two years in the United States, it'll be the first, it could be piloted next year. But the fact that we have laptops, we're gonna be seeing this embedded as time goes on, and I do think that we'll see us moving away. Not that this is a huge expense, but it is something that I think technology's going to answer in the next few years. I don't know if you guys agree, but.
Yeah, the, the only, I, I a hundred percent agree. Desmos has proliferated the market to the point where it is embedded in, uh, the SAT coming up soon, uh, as Mr. Moore explained. We do have courses, uh, that kind of breach the limits that Desmos can, uh, can handle. Uh, and when we talk about courses like AP Calculus, uh, even AP Statistics, um, this is the best device that we can offer. And to be honest, it puts our students on an even footing with students from other districts who have already purchased this device for their kids.
Awesome. Any other questions, comments? Yes.
I just want some little clarification. So this is a mandated calculator that we have for certain students to take certain courses in our school?
So historically, we've had, all math classes have run off the TA eighty-three, TA eighty-four calculators. So in both Niles North and Niles West, we have a pool of calculators that students who need one can check out.
Yes.
So we're asking to replace this, these outdated calculators with a newer calculator. The calculators are allowed, they're AP approved, so they're approved for all the AP tests. So the idea going forward is, uh, as was mentioned, SAT is going fully online with Desmos embedded. So if you're taking a class and your terminal high school math exam is the SAT, the idea is that you will use Desmos only on your Chromebook, on your district provided Chromebook. You will not be asked to buy a calculator, you will not need to buy a calculator at all. If you're on a math sequence that terminates with an AP course, an AP test, that's your, you know, endpoint math exam in high school, either AP Calc or AP Stat. As Luke said, there, these calculators are allowed on those tests and can do more than what Desmos offers. So for students enrolled in those course sequences, we would have this calculator available for them to check out, the same way that historically students have been able to check out the TA eighty-three or TA eighty-four.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that, because my position has always been that if it was a mandated, uh, a mandated, um, item like, uh, our, our computers and such, I personally feel that as a public institution, mandated material should not cost our students anything. So that's why I was just, I understand now clearly the, the function here. So thank you for clarifying.
So just curious, what's like the loss ratio on calculators that are, um, students that fail to return them, or the ones that get damaged and are, you know, can't repair those or replacements? So what's?
I can speak for a while, yes. A, a, as, as far as West goes, uh, we, between not being returned, damage, use, uh, we are talking fewer than twenty calculators out of our total inventory, which is in the hundreds.
Yeah.
To be honest, we are at a point with these current devices where that number is probably going to start climbing as the years progress, which is dovetails nicely with the timing that we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, that's awesome, got very responsible students.
They are.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank you, and I will need a roll call.
Member Noak?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes, yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. Okay, our next item is Employee Discipline, two thousand twenty-two E O one, discussion and action. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments? Nope, okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Member Dr. Ko?
abstain.
Member Noak?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. Our next, our next item is Employee Discipline, two thousand twenty-two E O one, discussion and action. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Did you say that was E O one again?
I'm sorry, E O two.
Yes.
I misspoke, yes, E O two. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Comments? Nope, okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Noak?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
abstain.
Member Abraham?
Yes. Next item, discussion and action. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the reclassification of the certified athletic trainer position from M two to P three as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Nope, we're gonna go ahead and roll call, please?
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Noak?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. Okay, our next item is Property Tax Levy. It's just information and discussion. May I have a, I need a motion?
No motion is needed.
Oh, no motion is needed, okay.
It's just informational.
Perfect.
I don't know if Tim's doing this for you guys or just for me, as I learn Illinois, so.
We have a new board member, so no, it's multiple people.
So, um, normally we'd be coming to the board at this time of the year to start with the tentative levy process, but because there's been some things going on at the county level, we don't have the information yet, and no, nor does any school district in Cook County have the information yet in order to proceed with the tentative tax levy. So we'll get into this, before we get into a very short, uh, slideshow. So what's happened, um, at the county level, um, we'll, we'll get into this, I'll talk, talk about it later. Let's.
He's out of order. She's out of order.
Getting ahead of the show.
Yeah. So we're gonna go through some short slides to give you some basic key points of, of tax levy and some basic terminology. Okay, so the main primary sources of revenue, um, in the tax levy is property tax. Eighty-four percent of our revenue in this district is property tax. Three percent is state revenue, six percent is federal, and Tim put other, um, CPRT, food service, and interest at seven percent. I just want to make this comment, the average district in the state of Illinois doesn't look like this. The average district in the state of Illinois is between forty and probably fifty percent state revenue. The federal is between seven and ten percent. So for us to be very heavily property tax wise, we have on a, we have a better control of our environment this way. So I just wanted to make that note, that this is a good, a good place to be in out of eight hundred and sixty-three schools in the state of Illinois. So, um, if you ever look at a school report card, we would be very few to see this type of revenue source, um, in this district. So I just want to make that comment, this is a good thing. Next. I want to explain some terminology and keywords. So tax levy extension, we say that a lot, that's the dollar amount that a property tax actually raised during the tax year. You'll also hear us say, "The district's tax levy." This is the amount of money the school district requests to be raised for property taxes. It's the estimate of taxes to be collected during the upcoming year. So this is a prediction that we're giving for the upcoming year. The calculation is as follow. New tax levy equals the prior year extension plus CPI, which is Consumer Price Index, increase plus the new property. Um, as Tim will talk later, we don't know any of that information right now from the prior year. So this makes it hard for us to calculate what we're gonna do in December. What is CPI? Consumer Price Index, it's the inflation indicator that measures the changes in the cost of fixed basket products and services, including housing, electric, food, and transportation. EAV, EAV is the equalized assessed valuation. It is, the EAV is assessed, assessed value of the taxable real estate in the district that equals to roughly one-third of the market value of the property. So that is a critical number that we have to go off on our, um, tax levy each year, and we do not know that number as of two thousand twenty-one school year. I have fat fingers, sorry.
You want me to click it?
I think I broke it, okay. Okay, so general levy information. The final levy must be adopted by the last Tuesday in December each year. The minimum of twenty days between the presentation of the tentative levy and the adoption of the required levy. This tentative final levy in excess of five percent, we have to do a truth and taxation to be published, and a public hearing must be conducted. Once the levy is adopted, it must be filed with the Cook County Clerk. The Cook Line Clerk calculates the new extension during the following spring, and wants that, once the amount of new, new property is known. So that's roughly some of the general information. Tim will take it off from here.
Going back to what we just, uh, talked about earlier, that, that equation is the key. The new levy is the prior year's extension, or in other words, what we got the prior year, plus the factor for CPI and new property. Back when the new CPI came back, uh, earlier this year, right around mid-January, um, the Consumer Price Index was seven percent, but because under the property tax extension limitation law, for a school district purposes, that's capped at five percent. So normally, as you can see on the top of this slide, we do know the CPI, and we know this prior year's tax extension. We never know the new property amount, and that's why, and some of you that have been on the board for a while know that when we, when we put the levy request together, we know CPI, and we always add a, a couple of points onto the, um, levy request to cover new property, because again, we don't know what that number's gonna be, and we won't know what that number's gonna be until, uh, the following spring, when the County Clerk's Office calculates the new, uh, tax extension. Problem is this year, there's been some significant delays at the county level coming up with last year's tax extension. We don't know what the tax extension is, which means we don't know, we, obviously we don't know the tax extension, but we don't know the new property from last year, because that's contained in last year's tax extension, as well as this year's, uh, new property. The other problem is, is that because the CPI increases historically high, it's never been this high in the last probably thirty years, um, we would most certainly ask for more than five percent. When you ask for more than five percent, you invoke the, um, truth of taxation law, which means we have to publish in the newspaper, and you've seen the, seen these in the newspaper, it's a big, black bordered advertisement saying what we got in for the last year's extension, plus the increases for this year's. The problem is, is that that language is very specific in that notice, um, in that it says, at first, we first have to put in what last year's extension is. Well, we're, we're stuck right there, because we don't know what last year's extension is. So, um, we're waiting on that information from the county. We had a webinar again today with the county, and there was probably close to a hundred, uh, Cook County districts in on this, on this discussion. The County Clerk's Office still doesn't know when it's gonna come out. They're anticipating that that information will become available sometime mid-November, which puts us up against a, a time crunch, getting the tentative levy out with it, and then have that twenty-day period, and then have the final levy adapted between, um, for the last December, last Tuesday in December, which is the twenty-seventh. So it may, it may well be that we may have, depending on how all the timing comes out with this information, it's possible that we may have to call a special board meeting in order to, to, uh, approve the tax levy. You wanna go ahead and click?
I did. You can't, I'll through the second.
Go ahead and go to the last one. So, as I said, all Cook County school districts are facing this issue. Some, because of, you've heard this in the paper too, I'm sure, you've seen it in the news, where the tax bills are, as a result, are also late. So the taxes, the tax revenues are coming to school districts late, and people are gonna wind up presumably getting a tax bill in December, and then turning around right around and having to get another tax bill right away in March. So if you're in escrow, it's not a big deal, but if you're paying when the bill comes in, that's a budgeting issue for some people. So, um, we have enough revenues that we can bridge that gap. Some other districts that aren't in as good a shape as we are financially would have to take, uh, bridge loans out to cover that gap in tax revenues coming up. But, uh, that's the situation we're in. It's, it's, uh, it's none of the district's faults. We wish we would be able to be earlier in the process and coming to you with a tentative levy now, and in having plenty of time to approve a final levy before the end of the year, but that's not gonna be the case. So we'll keep you posted. I have some, something on here about, uh, additional information October twenty-fifth. It's unlikely we're gonna get anything by then. It's unlikely we're gonna get anything by then either, frankly. It's probably gonna be more like mid-November. Any questions at all?
Yeah, is, is this a one-off, or has this happened historically where we've had this kind of delay?
First time it's ever happened.
Interesting.
Nothing even close. Normally, we get that extension information like April.
Okay.
So it's way late.
Yeah, it's really, really late. And then regarding the tax levy that we request, do we get the amount that we request, or does that, is that changed?
Right. So what happens is that we balloon the levy again, because in a typical year, we don't know what new property is. So say, like last year, the CPI was one point four percent. I think we asked in the neighborhood of, our levy request is like three, three point six nine percent, something like that. That additional couple of points was to cover any new property that came into the district. New property means like new construction. I don't wanna get into too technical here, but there's this thing called tax increment funding, which means basically, some, some properties get partially taken off the tax rolls for school district purposes to fund blighted areas or areas that need development in the, in the district. But when those, when those redeveloped areas come back onto the tax rolls, that's also considered new property. So there's things like that. But, so we don't know what that is. That's why we balloon the levy a little bit to cover that, because if you don't ask for enough, you're not gonna get it. And if you ask for too much, you're only gonna get what you deserve when the county clerk calculates the actual calculations the following spring. So it's kinda like if you don't, you gotta, you gotta inflate it a little bit. Unfortunately, this year, because of all the unknowns, again, at this point, we would have to balloon the levy considerably. I don't think we'll have to, because it looks at this point, if we wait until November, again, with some manipulating with some of the board meetings, we should have enough information that we can do a typical tax levy. It's gonna, we'll talk about it at that time. It'll probably be a little bit higher because of that five percent CPI. You know, the CPI is capped, capped at five percent, even though the actual CPI was seven percent. You know, in the meantime, our costs have gone up. Some of you well remember when I came to the board with the increases for transportation this last year, they were very significant. They were seven and nine percent. And other things are going up, maybe not quite as drastically, but they are. So that's why we will, I would ask the board to consider a significant unfortunate tax increase this coming year, based on that CPI increase.
Can you refresh by memory? When we were talking, I believe we took a vote several months ago about taxing the new properties. Didn't we turn that down?
That was for that one year, yes.
Yeah, which was this past year, correct?
Right, right.
So we're not, we don't have that extra three percent that you're talking about, do we?
Correct, as we normally did.
So that in turn actually affected us in a negative way.
Right, so.
Because we're not gonna be able to capture all the new property that's coming in, right?
Right. Now, we can go back to, you have a three-year, up to a three-year look back to recapture that, if the board would decide to do that. Right now, I think we're in pretty good shape. We have, we have that three years to compensate for that. But the dilemma in that is that, again, because each subsequent tax year is based on the prior one, again, it's last year's extension plus the CPI. Once you give up that CPI, that affects every single tax year going, going on from there.
Hundred percent. So, I mean, I recall that question twice, even though it was answered. We voted on it twice and it passed unanimously twice, but, I mean, I would like to bring that up to another subject again, because we're on this topic again, and it's gonna detrimentally affect us. That three percent is gonna basically, I mean, that's a, that's a huge increase for us, for us to see.
Right, again, we're still in pretty good shape, though, so.
So, yeah, I mean, but, you know, we don't know if there's another, God forbid, another COVID twenty-two or twenty-three or whatever else, monkeypox twenty-five, or you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Nobody ever expected to see this happen. And, and then, as you had pointed out, Kenya, eighty-four percent of our, of our money comes from property tax owners. So we're putting on, an extra burden onto all the property owners in this community.
Right.
And, you know, I don't understand why we don't wanna put that on our new homeowners or business owners that are in this community, because they're a part of this community as well, right?
Right.
And my mindset is, you know, we win together and we lose together, right? So, I mean, that's just another, I guess we can have this conversation at another time, but I would just like to bring that back up as another question, because you, we do have that time to go back on that and change our mindset. And, and I think especially for this one-off, it might actually help and benefit us. Even though we're in a good position right now, we don't know what might happen next, right? And we don't know where, you know, what, and for me, always being, you know, physically wanting that responsibility and the, you know, being pragmatic about our finances. And, and we just reduced our tax levies a few years before from a hundred and eighty million or somewhere around those numbers. And so my goal is to consistently make sure that, you know, yeah, we wanna have a great school. We have to have great communities, but with the rate everything is going and the increases that we're seeing, you know, three percent might actually hurt a lot of people in this instance. So, you know, I wanna call that question again to, to the rest of our board, if we're, anybody's willing to entertain that, because I know I was in my only, I was the only one to say no to that, but, you know, it was already six to one, so it didn't really matter at that point. But, you know, that I think is a, is a very legitimate concern that we should address. As you'll see here tonight, we have seven class proposals, but yet I haven't seen anything being dropped off of any of our, of our curriculum. At some point, we can't just keep adding on. I mean, there's a maximum load we can take. And if we're continuing just to add on, add on, which is great, we wanna add courses that are relevant and to our current situations for our students and everything else that we're facing. But how do we end up paying for that and not having another hundred eighty million dollars in debt? And, and just paying, pushing that, kicking the can down the line. I, I'm really, that just leaves a kinda bad taste in my mouth. I don't like that idea.
I'm not sure, I'm sorry, David.
So.
I'm not sure that's how I understood it. I think that the district is weighing sort of the options. We're still waiting to see some of how the data's gonna sort of land, and that this new levy would include the new, the new property, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, right?
Right, right.
So what, what we're.
But what do we, will we turn that down, correct?
Just for that one year.
Yeah, which was this past year.
Right.
So isn't that what we're talking about? So like, we're, we, we've been negatively impacted by that, and it compounds as we keep going in the future.
What, what we, what are we going to, what we will be receiving for last year's tax levy, we haven't gotten yet. That's the whole. We'll, we'll know exactly what that is when it comes in. It's, that's the main factor that we don't know right now.
Yeah, but because of that, that'll now affect us negatively, because we didn't capture that extra three percent.
I don't know that that's what I'm hearing from Tim, though. But, yeah, negatively in terms of loss, but overall, in terms of the district stance financially, it's still very.
Going forward, it's a lost gain.
Yeah.
Right.
So it is a loss, though, yeah. If it's a lost game, I, I mean.
Yeah, I know, I.
The most easiest concept to think of a tax levy, you think of it as the money you have that you know for the growth of your community, but you also need to understand it's the most critical part of revenue in a school district, where it is compounded year after year from prior year's information. So whatever we do, which is very critical, that's why we're saying this so diligently, that this is a huge concern, that we don't know these numbers, because what we put will affect us going forward. So if we make any errors in the new property, if we make any errors in the EAV, that will affect us compoundingly going forward. So that's why we're having a discussion with you again now, and we're gonna probably have a discussion with you again in another twenty, you know, fifteen days, until we make sure we get that information to have that solid number. But we can regrow and rebuild, 'cause that number and the other factors do grow with the community and the economy at the same time. So I wouldn't say we always be totally a three percent loss, but once you give back, you do lose a little, but you also gain when the community grows, when the economy grows, when the stock market grows. All of that changes the whole dynamics of that revenue.
And that's a great point, but as you just put it, we're, I mean, economically, we're in a world of hurt right now. Stock market's going up.
True.
That's not gonna happen anytime soon, right? Growth, we're not looking at any growth. What's our growth rate at point one percent?
Right.
Right? I mean, that's historically not good either. So I understand that we can capture all these back. If everything is working in tip-top shape and everything, all the wheels are spinning in a correct way, sure, we would collect that back. But in the next five to ten years, I mean, I can't really sit there and see that we're gonna be able to collect all that back and gain all that back from everything that's gonna be continuing economically, from whether it's oil prices or stocks and everything else. Everything is being depressed. I can't, I mean, nobody is, I mean, I haven't heard any economist speaking and saying, yeah, you know, what guy's in the next five years, we're gonna do a turnaround, and we're gonna go back up to like forty thousand in the stock market and all these other things. That's kind of a pipe dream right now. So.
Can I recommend something? Can I just recommend that maybe we look at some future projections from your team about how this is going to look maybe in the next three to five years?
Right. As you know, we typically come out with a projection, but right now, we don't have the information to make. I mean, I can give you a projection, but it's not gonna be worth the paper it's written on.
And then with those project. When it took the words out of my mouth, I think the valuable tool we'll have is, is the three-year projection, that we base our, our revenue as well as our expenditure. And then based on those projections, then we could adjust in terms of capital investments and, and capital projects and things of that nature. So I think that is going to be a, a, a critical bit of information, once we have the information to fill into that projection.
Right. Yeah, the purpose of this discussion tonight originally was just to kinda highlight what's going on with the delay in the information. We'll come forward again with, as we have in other, in prior years, where we talk about what goes into the tentative levy and then again, when we, when we approve the final levy in December.
Along with those, if you could also give us the most optimal in that three-year, like what it looks like when everything is running at a hundred percent, when we're kicking all twelve cylinders, and then what it looks like with the loss that we have, that three point four percent that we didn't do, and what, how that compares, if we can do a side-by-side comparison to see that, because that would, I think, benefit.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have any comments or questions or remarks? Yes.
Just one final comment for me is, you have a three-year window to recoup any of those frozen.
Right.
So can you just make sure you know the deadline of that three-year window and keep that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you. And then the next item is approval of authority to intervene in property tax appeals discussion and action. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three resolution authorizing intervention and proceedings before the State of Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board as presented? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Looks good.
Do you want me to say anything?
Yep, please.
You can.
Sure, I mean, I'm reading it, but.
Yeah. So basically, there's, there's two primary ways that taxpayers are, in, in, really more particular in this instance, businesses can object to their taxes and try to get their properties reassessed. The first is a tax objection complaint, which basically means they wanna get their property reassessed. In that instance, say they do get it reassessed and it gets lowered, whatever the tax, whatever taxes they wind, that homeowner winds up not paying, just gets redistributed among the other taxpayers, because again, we get what we got last year plus the CPI. So, you know, whatever that takes to get there, that's how we get there. The other method, historically, is called the Property Tax Appeals Board, which normally is only taken advantage of, not take, that's bad language, utilized by businesses, much higher dollar amounts, and it's a more formal process. Historically, when somebody gets their, their commercial property reassessed through the Property Tax Appeals Board, the, unlike the tax objection complaint, that money is paid back to that taxpayer from the school district. So it's a whole different thing. And what, what we do, the Township Treasurers Office is the facilitator for the pool of this district and our feeder districts to get together and hire attorneys to act on our behalf when these, when these objections are filed. They've done a very good job. We do pay out once in a while, actually quite often, but it's a reduced amount through the efforts of the attorneys. So that's what this is about, is granting the authority to use, use the Niles Township Treasurers Office and to hire attorneys on our behalf. Whenever, whenever a PTAB issue comes forward, they notify Kenya and myself, and we go through the documents, and we talk about whether or not we wanna hire the attorney for a particular case. We've been doing that. One thing to note, though, this last year, and it looks like it's gonna happen again this, this following year, they changed the law, at least temporarily, where instead of the school district having to pay for that, like I just talked about, they decided to redistribute it, just like a tax objection complaint. So we didn't eat it, in fact, when we get our, when we get our levy extension, there'll be a line item at the very bottom saying how much we got because of PTAB, because we paid it out already. We're gonna get reimbursed from the, from the county clerk's office once, once our extension comes through. So it's a little bit different. Now, the question you might ask is, why would we bother then hiring attorneys to do this? Well, the primary answer is, is to protect the other taxpayers. Because if it's getting redistributed, if those larger amounts of reassessments, I mean, we're talking like the big box stores and the malls and big business kinda stuff. So we, and to preserve the integrity of the valuation of the properties in the district, we act on the taxpayer's behalf so that the other taxpayers are protected to some degree. So that's why we still continue that process, so.
Do you know what the threshold is, like you were talking about?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand?
Mm-hmm.
So anything over a hundred thousand, so?
We get a notice and then we decide whether or not to, we don't always pursue them all, because like if it's a hundred and fifty and it's not worth it, and they're not looking for that much.
It's not worth the lawyer costs and fees, right?
Right, right.
And, and, but if we go after the big box stores or like Old Orchard, for instance, that's one of our tax constituents, I guess that would be.
I wouldn't say we go after them.
No, yeah, of course not, but, yeah, for sure. Sorry. Bad words again, not, not the correct choice of words. But, so, I mean, what then, so then this would just give our attorneys the, like?
So what happens is that the, so we get, the, the, Niles Township Treasurers Office gets notice that there's an appealing process. So that they say, okay, here's what the, here's what the assessed value is currently. Here's what the taxpayer thinks the assessed value should be. Here's the difference. Here's the tax implications on all, on each, and all, all the districts and all the taxing bodies are listed. Here's what the impact would be on two nineteen and, you know, all the, all the other taxing bodies down the list. What do you wanna do? We think we can carve that number down to X by having our attorneys get into play and, and, and basically negotiate. And that's what we decide to do, and each, and then a notice goes out to each of the, each of the districts, and we all come back and say whether or not we wanna pursue it or not.
A hundred thousand dollars, it's a lot lower than I thought it was.
There's not many of those. They're, they're usually quite more significant.
Yeah, I mean, you would think that.
Yeah.
And what is the, do you know just off the top of your head, like, I mean, do we ever really go after the small guys, or is it mostly just?
It's mostly bigger ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So is that like a collective agreement to hire the, it's not just us, but all the districts?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? No, okay. Can I get a roll call, please?
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Noick?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
No.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzany?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. Okay, our next item, school, summer school report discussion and action. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the proposed dates for summer school twenty twenty-three as outlined in the report?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And somebody's gonna give us a summary of what's going on. All right.
Are we using screen? No, okay. Cause everybody has it on their laptop. Very good. Hello, I'm Todd Bowen. If you do not know me, I know I've not met some of you. I, during the year, I'm the Director of World Language, and for the past several years, I've been one of the principals for summer school. This past summer, I was principal organizing everything leading up to summer school and first session, and then second session. We had Paul Swanson, who was a retiring member of the administrative team who was the principal. They obviously know you, the two of you.
We hope so.
For the worse.
They've been sitting in staples in the house.
So, Summer School twenty-two was a, pardon me, twenty-two, that's right, was a return to more of this, the normal, the symptoms of normalcy, if you will. We continued to focus not only on credit recovery courses, but we also added what we used to do in summer school, which was some enrichment courses, advanced. school, which was some enrichment courses, advancement courses for our students. Most of our policies returned to pre-pandemic. That involved things such as attendance requirements that were in-person and pretty strict. As usual, continuing to provide opportunities for our students to earn two credits. In the the previous year's iteration, they'd had the ability to earn a little bit more than that, because we did not have the same kind of seat requirements from the state. Students who were doing driver's ed and the PW makeup courses could also earn additional credits beyond those two standard bases. We featured twelve credit recovery courses and twelve enrichment courses, all based on demand. For the credit recovery courses, we made decisions that we would staff those courses completely on demand. So when we added needed additional sections in English, my colleagues, the directors of the English Department in both buildings recruited teachers to fill that. We wanted to make sure that we always were responding to the need of credit recovery. Some of the advancement courses filled quickly, and we were not able to offer as many sections of that just based on the limitations. There was some hesitancy from people to continue teaching after the year they had been through. So staffing for summer school is a little bit of a challenge. Due to the board's decision and there was not, there were no fees associated with summer school, so instead we instituted multiple confirmations. The last thing that we wanted to do was to be overstaffed when we were already stressed, and we wanted to make sure that we were using tax dollars wisely. And so we asked families to confirm, I believe, a total of three times in that process. Staff was predominantly D two nineteen employees, but was a smaller amount of D two nineteen employees that we'd had in previous iterations. We ran the traditional year of the traditional day, five days a week, starting at eight and ending at twelve fifteen with PW recovery courses after that. Summer school began on June ninth, after our sender districts had wrapped up their school year and ended at the end of July, July twenty-sixth that year. We did celebrate Juneteenth holiday as well. Enrollment demographics that you have in front of you, those are comparison charts on each of the pages. Trying to make sure that as we looked, we look at things with our eye on racial equity and making sure that our summer school kind of flew flowed in the same process as the year in terms of the students who were enrolled. You'll see there's not a great distinction between the general year population between twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two. When we look at summer school with twenty-two and twenty-one, there's not a distinct difference between those. But we do notice that there are a few, a smaller portion of white students, a slightly higher population of Black and African-American students, and Latino students. Asian students, it's pretty similar to the regular school year. So there seems to be something there we're just paying attention to, making sure that we're serving our students appropriately. And if something were to be significantly out of whack, I think we would want to make sure that we're addressing that appropriately. In terms of credit recovery and enrichment, which is the next page in your document, both are parallel to summer school figures. In terms of the credit recovery, it's almost identical along the way. There are some slight differences, but not a lot. In the enrichment and advancement, there are a few differences that are noticeable. Again, fewer number of students who are Hispanic, Latino, or Black and African-American in the enrichment courses than in the overall summer school, a higher number of Asian students. The chart that's showing you kind of comparisons along the way, you will notice that we had a much larger enrollment this past summer than we had the previous summer. I'll remind the board members or those who were not present at that point in time, Summer School twenty twenty-one was in-person and was only credit recovery courses, and we had very small classes. We kept the classes at twelve, trying to keep a very small ratio, making sure we're paying attention to our social, emotional learning needs as well as the academic needs. And so last year, because we added additional courses with the enrichment courses, that did increase the number of students overall. Comparing credit recovery and enrichment, again, you'll notice, much to everyone's satisfaction, we're at ninety-eight point seven students who receive passing grades. Predominantly was As and Bs, but we're really happy that students are successful in summer school. I strongly believe that the staff works very closely with students to make sure they are successful, modifying curriculum, providing the extra one-on-one, really addressing their needs. Additionally, the same thing you'll see in the enrichment as well. Specific statistics there in terms of who the teachers were along the way. That brings us to the proposal portion, our action item. We are proposing a window for summer school, beginning the earliest Thursday, June eighth, and first session and ending June thirtieth, observing the Juneteenth holiday. Second session window would be Thursday, July sixth to Friday, July twenty-eighth. We're proposing that we will be at Niles West. We rotate between the two schools. So last year at North, despite the construction, we were able to have summer school going on, able to work around that. And so this year, we'll be doing the same a little bit at West. Are there any questions that you might have for me?
I have a few, if you don't mind. Sorry. So it seems like with the, since twenty twenty-two summer school, with the advanced enrichment courses that we offered, was that an extra necessity because of our kids having gone through that COVID period and to help them either graduate or whether, did you know if there were a lot of seniors that necessarily needed this versus our freshmen or sophomore underclass kids, or was it just even distribution?
So typically, the enrichment courses are underclassmen.
Okay.
Who are looking either to advance in some way, pursue a passion, or simply find something to do for the summer to enrich their own lives.
Sure.
There was a high demand for health because perhaps you should address that issue, because I'm not sure I understand it well enough to address health in terms of how it fits into the curriculum.
So health is a requirement for students to take, and so for many of them, they take, they see it as if they take it in summer school, then they are able to open up their schedule for other courses. So health becomes a very popular course in our summer school program. So that's essentially what it comes down to.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? None? Okay. It's pretty straightforward. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right. That's it. Then we'll go ahead and move on to a roll call.
Oh, we do have finances to address. We've not addressed.
Are we gonna do that?
Let's just do that as well.
Sorry. Usually they're separate.
So, yeah, so if you look at that last sheet, you'll see that we're kind of back to pre, as far as the expenses go, we're kind of back to pre-pandemic levels. First on the revenue side, as as the board well knows, we didn't charge for any tuition or bus fees for summer. We did increase the Title I summer school funding in twenty twenty-two, as you can see. On the expenditure side, you kind of, if you skip the year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, again, those are the primarily the pandemic years. You can see the numbers are pretty close to what we were pre-pandemic. Transportation, you can see, is jacked up a little bit this last year. Some of that may have to do with transporting students that are within a mile and a half of school. We did incur a significant increase in our transportation costs this last year, and I and I think that number may be polluted a little bit with some summer camp transportation, but we'll take another look at that. So any questions at all?
Can I ask you a question? Why, what happened to our security and custodial in the last two years?
Actually, the last three years. We decided not to include that anymore because they're there anyway. I don't know how those numbers were quantified in the past because they were there anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, it just, it was a number, and then all of a sudden it went to zero.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. I forgot to observe that. Any other questions?
So the recommendation is to continue to offer in the way that we offered summer school last year with no fees. Is that part of what's on the deck? No?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
So it sounds like for me, for last year, tuition and fees for summer school program were waived for all two nineteen students.
Right.
Except for driver's ed.
Right.
Right.
That's not what we're discussing today. This is just the budget.
We'll come back to the board for next year, like right after the first, you know, February-ish, to to talk about that, whether or not we want to continue that or not.
That's why I thought they were separate, too. So you and I are on the same page.
Two different conversations.
Can I, can I ask you a question from Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Going back to the charts. So the the passing rate is really high.
Yes.
And I'm just wondering, the ten, fifteen people that didn't pass, is there a way for us to know from what racial group that you have identified here?
I did not identify that. That is something I could follow up.
I think that would be useful, because if all or the majority are from one group, that might say something specifically.
And or at the very least, understand the academic interventions as well, right? Or like, how are we trying to help this?
And also, my understanding is that students will not pass if they miss a certain number of days. Is that correct?
Students are allowed, depending on whether it's a three-week course or whether it's a six-week course, is the number of absences. Essentially, if they miss twice, they're excluded. They they no longer continue. They're dropped.
So it's potentially, that could be the reason why some of these students didn't pass?
No. They, those students would not have been included in the report.
Okay.
When we drop a kid from that, they don't, would not end up getting a grade.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you also maybe give us the numbers of how many kids actually did drop? So what the real start number was to what the kind of finish line looks like?
I don't have that data. That's not something we have tracked.
Okay.
In discussions with the administrative assistant, she, her question becomes an, at what point do we start counting the drops?
Mm-hmm.
Because oftentimes, students don't appear that first day because they claim, or the family says, I, we didn't sign up. Somewhere, there's a miscommunication error. That was part of the reason that we kept insisting, please confirm, please confirm.
For the three times that you were talking about?
Correct. So we want to know when, what our actual data is. So we need to track that data better. That's something we're not tracking currently.
Thank you.
I'll add that to our list of things.
Will you be tracking that throughout the year or just for summer sessions?
I'm only responsible for summer. I will not take on the year.
I'm curious to learn about the entire year. Like, we started out with a certain enrollment, and every now and then you'll hear, you know, that some classes don't have as many students, and why are they on the class offering? So I'm just wondering if we could do that throughout the year so that we would have better data.
We've already talked about that. I've gotten some of the reports on it, and I do want, and as especially as we talk about new course proposals.
Awesome.
Yeah, and just, I just want to point out, we do have that data, so we can make that available.
Oh, beautiful. Awesome. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments?
So I just want to confirm. So what we're gonna be voting on right now is the the dates and the location.
The window of the dates, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. And with that being said, I think we could move on to a roll call, right?
Member Noick?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzane?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. All right. Next, we're gonna move on to discussion on new course proposals. So Dr. Aragine?
Yes. Before Dr. Aragine begins, I just want to thank her for her work with this and shepherding me through this process. And I I think that the most important decisions we made, I think the most important day for equity is when students sign up for their courses as far as educational equity and what what we can get kids to take, what we can get them to think about, and are they following their passions. So I just want to thank Sandra for this and me and all of our curriculum directors and their work with this. And I do want to say a couple things that we've already talked about. How do we look at this in a longer, broader pattern than what are we adding for next year? And even looking at this process over time, should we do, even when we approve a course, should the next year be a pilot year where maybe just one section is so we can learn about that course at that point? Not that you want to limit a course. Obviously, we have people that are very excited to get started, but you want that course to be as good as it can be. And sometimes that takes building over time. And the other thing is, we've also talked about, and Dr. Aragine is is in agreement, and we're looking at having future meetings. This is unique to new course proposals, so it'd be about new courses. But to also have a meeting about, okay, let's really look at our course catalog. Does it meet the needs of our kids now? Does it meet the needs of our kids in the future? And even looking at a five-year curriculum review process to make sure that we're creating courses in a field of study in high schools that high school looks more like the world that our kids are going into in the future, which is harder and more challenging. We don't know what it's gonna be than what we went to twenty years ago. And that the courses also speak to them the same way and prepare them for a world that is rapidly changing. So I just want to thank her for that, as she introduced these new course proposals and all the work that went into all of these. It was a very interesting process for me, too, to be involved in for the first time here.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much, and I cannot take all of the credit. This is the work of a committee. This is the work of curriculum directors that you see here, of teachers, students, and parents, as you saw today as well in our community. So many, many people are involved in this, and I agree with Mr. Moore that this is possibly one of the most important things that we do in the district. So I'm happy to talk to you today about the curriculum, course proposals that are on the table for this year. There are twelve proposals that came to the Curriculum Standards for School Improvement Committee. Four of those were course revisions, three name changes, and five new courses. We have our curriculum directors here who will be able to answer specific questions about those. And, you know, we are open to anything that you may be wondering about the new courses. One thing that I will say to you when you look at the table is you have the department that the course came from, the curriculum course itself, and when you go to the link, you can see the proposal that was submitted, the proposal, the action, name change, for instance, for the first one, and then the vote that the CSSI committee took. As you can see, for most of these, the CSSI committee did recommend, whether it was the name change, the revision, or as a new course. There were a couple, and it just happened to be in our math department, that those were not recommended for for a vote to, for changes or the revision. So the first one, and I'll want to talk to you about that one specifically, is the math. And that, there was a consensus to review that separately. So one of the things that we're super grateful for this course proposal is that it pointed out something in our system that we realize that we have to look at across the board, that just changing, just taking action to change this name is not actually going to achieve the result we want. There was an identified issue with the name itself, and it might not be giving the credit that we think on the transcript to students, or whenever our colleges, universities look at it, they're not recognizing the course. But as this came up, other issues started popping up. So in talking to Ms. Bridget Connolly, the decision that we made and the recommendation that I brought to the CSSI committee was to allow us the opportunity to do a full review of all of our courses, to audit all of our course names, so that then we can bring it back to the board and let you know how we are improving those so that our students are recognized for their efforts and for their works. The issue is that sometimes the course, just by the name, not even by what the description is, are not viewed as rigorous enough or preparing students for college. And so we want to make sure that the course is able to, the course, when it gets onto the transcript, is identified in that way for our students. So just to give you the background on that one specifically. But for the others, I will invite the directors to come and talk about those or answer any questions that you may have. And we can start with the English department. And again, if there are any questions, if you don't have any, then they can just say hello.
You want to go?
Go ahead.
So I have just a general question, and it's beyond just the English department. When a course is recommended, what exactly does that mean? Does that mean that it's a nine-seven vote of the CSSI? Does that mean that it's a nine-seven vote of the CSSI?
Uh, it can be, it can be. So on the CSSI committee, it is the, the teacher representatives, the students and the parents that vote. So the administrators, and I want to also acknowledge, uh, Dr. Karen Ritter and Dr. James Edwards, they're on the committee as well. Um, the administrators and also the union representatives do not vote. The teachers who got voted into the committee are. So it, it can be, it varies for, for all of them.
Okay, so, so that leads to my, my, my concern is if a vote is recommended with a nine-seven marginal passing, um, I, as a board member, would like to hear the, the dissenting decision of those seven people to see, why did you not want this board, this particular course to be recommended? Um, like especially the one, the math class where it was a tie, eight to eight. I don't see how an eight to eight tie should be even presented to this board at this time for consideration.
Well, I can answer that. I'm, I'm hugely in favor of that. Even though it's eight to eight, I think it's what's best for kids. And I do think that there's an element here that, that the committee makes recommendations, and then we as leaders have to come forward and say, okay, what do we really believe that we're tracking towards? And so there can be a lot of reasons that people vote yes, that vote no on something. I, listen, I haven't been a part of a process like this where it's a split vote or things like that. I, I, you know, I mean, because it's interesting, because the board sets what courses get approved and don't get approved. So this is a recommendation, and then the recommendation comes to us, and I feel a responsibility as a superintendent, as somebody who's been hired to espouse a vision for the district, to say, yeah, and, and by the way, the numbers, that's completely fair, although there's, there is representation in that committee. But then as we come here to go back and forth with, this is the, um, these are the reasons why we are recommending it. Your point is very well taken about that, and I get it, and I know I'm new, and so to say eight to eight because it's a debatable point, but as that was presented to me, I one hundred percent believe it's the best thing for kids. And it's not the English course. We can get to that when we talk about it. But so that's, that's kind of what comes through to me here is that these are courses that are proposed, and part of the difficulty of this process here, even these courses, you know, these are both just, uh, these revisions and a name change in the English department, so it's not the same as something else that's new. And that's, that's part of the process that frankly, I struggle a little with because, okay, we're creating a new course, but it's not till it's approved by the board that the work to truly develop the course. You know, you're approving an idea, a kernel, and then that summer, we're doing all the curriculum work for it, and then it goes into being with the kids, and that's why for it to go away right away and you could have five sections of a course, well, are we sure we want five kids to take that seed before it's been vetted and piloted and that kind of process? So, so I get your question that there's parts of this process that are contractual, and that's how it goes forward too. And, and that can be, that can be a reality of something, you know what I mean? Frankly, so if this committee, so I say we'll recommend a course, all right, and say I'm, I teach Advanced Place from European History, and, you know, we had a question about, we don't get rid of courses. Let's say Advanced Place from European History had reached its time of fruition and shouldn't be offered here anymore because other courses have taken its place. Well, I'm going to tell everybody on that committee, don't vote to eliminate that course. And anytime you add something, so there's a natural feeling, people could be going towards another course, that that could affect an individual teacher, that could affect a one department vis a vis another department. It's why it's really incumbent upon us to look at all courses from a district-wide perspective. Because the truth is, it doesn't affect FTEs at all, district-wide. Kids are just taking courses. But it may be affecting them department versus department, and that's, that's where you could get tension between departments about who's protecting. So that, to me, is the only danger with the vote attached to it and the numbers, because I don't know who voted, how they voted, you know? So that would be my own caveat about it.
You know, my sentiment about that, I think, is kind of in alignment with what you just said. I don't have any problems with what those numbers look like, as long as it's something that's being vetted still or audited or something, or a name change. I don't have any problems with that at all. I think when it comes to a new course, then those numbers might matter. But if it's just a revision or a name change or something, some small minor modification, I don't think that that's...
Can I ask another general question? Do we have a board member that's actually on CSSI? Because I haven't been updated on CSSI in probably a year, if not longer.
No, I think Jill was...
So we used to have a board member on a part of CSSI. He was part of it all, so maybe that's another reason why, when it comes to us like this, it feels like it's coming out of left field, because we're not getting updated monthly or whenever it is that you guys are meeting to get the understanding of, hey, you know, we started here and now we're here and we're, we're having this progression of the conversation. So we just kind of feel like, what, where did this come from, in a sense? And for us to ba, basically always have it attached to what our, uh, our mission statement and our strategic plan for our kids are, which then entails like, for instance, things like, we don't call it classrooms first anymore, but, you know, our ten-year pilot program on the classrooms first, it's hit ten years almost, and then, and about the end of this year, what are we doing? We don't have an exit strategy. We don't have a, if we're going to stay and what we're going to maintain. And I would like to be able to say, if we're going to follow a strategic plan and a mission statement that we have, that we can base that off of the reasons why we as a board either decide to approve or recommend or not approve a course, because it, we can literally tell you, this has nothing to do with our strategic plan or our mission statement. If this is not a part of classrooms first or how we're trying to change up our, you know, remediation in math, for instance, then what is it doing here, right? And so, I mean, that's why I kind of feel like, sorry, we're, you guys had the, the English department had to deal with the brunt of this. It's not about you guys, but what it is, is just, I think, an overarching thing for the board to not fully understand what we're seeing because how do we make a decision on something that we haven't been prepped all year long, which you guys have been working probably all year long doing this, right? So, you know, it, it, you know, we don't want to make you feel like, oh my God, they don't really care what we did this whole year. We do. We just don't see what, where it's been coming from and how it's matured throughout the time.
So I just want to say that last year, we did have, uh, Ms. Manrique and Dr. Lopez also was a part of CSSI, so thank you very much for that. This year, we received the, the board committees, the names. So we always invite the people who remain from the previous year, um, and then we invite the people who are new to the committee as well. So we are never going to keep board members out of committees. Um, same thing happens for, uh, CFC. So in terms of when we look at these courses, I hope that you were able to see in the proposal process itself, all of the steps that we ask, and certainly the alignment to the strategic plan. I do want to say that none of this is happening independently or in a vacuum. We have really taken steps, and I want to credit the directors, because everybody is required to have conversations. So as a matter of fact, if something comes to CSSI, a proposal, and people have not spoken to, for instance, the North Department or the West Department, they are asked to go back and have those conversations. So I do want you to know that there is even a handbook for CSSI that we follow and that everything is vetted through that lens. Um, I do understand your questions as well, but I, I don't want you to feel like we just, um, prepared these overnight and brought these to you.
Can I just add, because I, as someone who was participating in some of those meetings, we, we did and were receiving some updates, and we did get some nice updates over the summer around the potential expansion of some of the work with our standard districts. Uh, and the work is actually going really well. So, and I know that you all are planning to sort of revive some presentations for us in the near future. So that's great. I do, I do just want to piggyback on some of the commentary, because I, I love the work that all the teachers are doing around this. And I, I agree, I, I do feel that at the board letter, board, board level, I'm not a subject matter expert in, in math or, you know, some of these air, other areas. Um, and I don't know that the board, but I don't know that it's sort of our space to sort of say, hey, why is this English class changing? And I'm not, I'm not sure to that level. That's why we have a superintendent. You guys make the call. We want to, you know, give you the, and then we hold you accountable for delivering on a strong, relevant curriculum that is moving our children to the next level. And so I think that there's a, there's that level of, yeah, you all do it. You follow what he's saying, right? Because we're going to grow and get this done. To that, and I would say three things for our leader and for, for you all. One is, just as I'm perusing this, is sort of the, um, three things, and we can sort of just have a discussion. Because my understanding is that this is just a discussion today, and we're just sort of hearing sort of what's coming. But just, you know, challenging our curriculum to, uh, sort of sit in that realm of continued relevancy. I think what I hear you saying is that sometimes our community, our society moves to, uh, new ideas, uh, new principles, new, new sort of competencies that I think we need to, uh, have our curriculum sort of skating to. And that means that some things need to be sunset or sort of put on a shelf. And I think that the accountability there is to say, hey, Tom, I hope that there's a process there where you're looking at sunsetting things and that this curriculum that our students are engaging in is the most up-to-date, relevant. And that's sort of on you respectfully, uh, and you all to sort of deliver on that. So that's the one, around that relevancy. And I think we're seeing some of that in here today, and what we're hearing from our community is a beautiful thing and hopefully, and something that we can sort of move on. Uh, so that was the first thing. The second thing is, um, around the credit, right? So the students that are engaging these sort of courses, um, and I'll use the, the, I'm, I'm very much in favor and love to see sort of culture and representation in, uh, our courses, and the Assyrian language course today, uh, showing up today is brilliant. Um, the awareness to our students and community, if and when a course like this is launched, to be truthful about how Illinois State Board of Ed recognizes or does not recognize world language credit. Like, then I'm, that's where we're asking you, superintendent, to ensure that our community is saying, we celebrate this awesome course, but, but they're not feeling duped because it actually doesn't count by ISBE standards. And that that communication is being fully vetted to our folks that, so folks that are stepping into this in the future are aware of what the truth of this is and that you guys have a plan to move that forward. So that's the second thing. And then the third, and I promise I'll shut up, um, is, is I'm a big believer that we all walked away from an, uh, you know, it was COVID. There was something in the technology, and I, you've heard me say this before, uh, the instructional design piece. I think that we need to move to a world where if you're launching new courses, that those courses and those subject matter experts are also working in tandem with instructional designers. There's something to be said about the usage of your learning management system, that new courses being developed w- walking in tandem with instructional design LMS, that should be happening upfront together. Because if it's after, right, we launched an Assyrian culture class, and now we want to add ID to this LMS sort of creativity and, and how you leverage technology, like that, that to me, I would be like, eh, what, why are we waiting to enhance this with what new LMSs can offer us? Because we learned a lot of that through COVID and how to do sort of this co-instruction. I think those, from the board level perspective, I think that my mind says, I think that those are fair questions that I can ask and challenge our superintendent. I, I can't challenge you on math extensions, right?
I don't like the name.
Yeah, that's, that's not my place, man. That's not my place. But I'm going to challenge you on these other three things. So I don't know if you have thoughts on that or if you have any thoughts as well.
Yeah, I do. Um, so in terms of the first one, we're talking about sunsetting courses. Uh, Mr. Moore has been very clear that he does want us to look at that, and I do agree with him that that is, um, a viable request for us to look at our courses to see what are students taking, what are students interested in. That's, that's what we need to do. Um, I do want to say, we also don't have, um, an infinite amount of sections or FTE, so those courses have been sunsetting themselves, and our directors could, could tell you that. They make some very tough decisions, um, about courses, what courses are going to run or not run in their department. So all of spring is spent scheduling on that. But I do hear what you're saying, and I agree with Mr. Moore, that we do have to do that exercise of looking at it together and making some decisions about, and even communicating. This is what our students are interested in. This is what they're telling us based on where they're enrolling. Um, the second one, if you could remind me, Dr. Lopez?
The first was, um, the cred, second was about credit hours.
Credit hours for, um, Assyrian language and culture. So that was a lot of work that would happen last year. And ultimately, what ISBE did is that they did add Assyrian language and culture to the course catalog, and it can count as a world language requirement. So that is something that we can be honest with our community about, that that wa, is going to be a possibility for students. So again, a lot of work went into that. Many, many, many people worked on that, and that's because we wanted to offer that transparency and to ensure that. And, uh, Dr. Lopez, you were a part of CSSI last year where that course was delayed because of the questions that came up. So you, um, you were with us when, when we went through that. Um, and the last one? Instructional design. So I think that in terms of instructional design and the dilemma that you're bringing up, it points back to what Mr. Moore said. That is, the proposals come before the course is actually given the time to be planned out. Once they are approved by the board, then our directors can plan summer curriculum projects to actually do the course, the training, um, not the training, the preparation for it. But before that, it's not something that is allowed. I've had to say to some of our directors, no, I cannot approve that summer curriculum project because it's not a course that's been approved. I think I've said it to you. So, um, that is a result of our process, and that is something that Mr. Moore has also identified already in this short time and said, you know, maybe this is not the way that we should be going about it.
So they do the budget cycle as well. The assumption is that for new course development or for course maintenance or course revision, however terminology you all use, that it's going to cost X dollars for either one of those three. You, if you charted five hundred courses that are going to go for revision each year.
Right.
Then it sort of sits in the budget cycle.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So we would have to plan for that.
That's part of what you're saying.
I think that's why, yeah.
It clips in as far as that.
Exactly.
And for him to do pilot programming or how you start that up, that's a really great way to talk about, bring that up because it's right now, it's the, you know, putting that backwards right now is, is really where it makes a lot of sense and going to there. Um, with that question, can I ask a question to the English department about, um, your dual credit for the senior college prep courses for Bible, mythology, and images? Um, where, do you guys clearly, and this kind of goes to member Lopez's conversation too, about, you know, um, where do you accept the dual credits? Is it all the universities and colleges? Is it only locally? Is it only our, like, Loyola campus schools? And are they, you know, fully aware of that being a dual credit course and it only applies to certain, you know, regions or wherever they take the credits?
So this particular revision would be a partnership with NEIU, and they approached us, it was kind of a partnership with some teachers that started at West and, and some professors at NEIU who actually have students in the district.
So if I don't go to Northeastern, right, NEIU, uh, and I, let's say I go to UIC, University of Illinois Chicago, right?
Yeah.
I won't get a dual credit?
Well, we, so we've been working with our, um, Dean of College Counseling on this. There are some reciprocal agreements. So it would differ, obviously, based on the university.
Sure, and I mean, by coast, right?
Yeah.
West Coast, Midwest, East Coast, they all have different, uh, accrediting bodies that all accredit certain courses, right? So just to be a little bit more clear about that as they come up, I would love to understand, like, it's great that NEIU is starting the program. Or I remember a couple of years ago, even a year ago, uh, Dr. Aragine, we had Loyola with a dual credit course and those things. But that starts to get really confusing for me, and I'm wondering how the students would be able to identify that and understand that, you know, because they might change their mind and say, well, I don't want to go to NEIU anymore. I want to go to Loyola, or that, that happening. And it almost feels like they took this course and it's like, oh, well, now I don't have that dual credit anymore, right?
And that would be stated upfront. It'd be very clear to students, this is the partnership with NEIU, you know, and they would be able to work with our college counselors on what, you know, they look at their university, what would transfer. We have the same thing with our AP credits. Not all schools take.
Sure.
Even if you get a four or a five, not all schools are going to take those credits, so it differs based on where they go.
But, uh, opposite of the AP, AP actually is more widely accepted than some of these courses, it seems like. I mean, because we're, you're fundamentally working with one university or wherever that is and, and kind of just locking into there.
Correct. But this offers a wider range of students, the opportunity to earn the college credit versus, you know, the smaller pool of kids that we have that take and pass the AP exam.
So can I ask another question a different way? So let's say I went to NEIU, I took this dual credit here, I get the credit for it because I went to high school here. But let's say I transferred to USC. Will my credit that I've gotten credit for apply to that in that direction if I'm already in college where I transferred out to a different university?
So that, again, that would differ based on the university. So students would have to kind of look into that. You know, it's, it's low risk though, low cost. Um, we think the benefits outweigh.
I only bring this up because when I was in high school, college, I took a course that was a dual credit, thought it was the greatest idea in the world, let's get it all knocked out and focus on my major. Um, come to find out, when I transferred, oops, only works there. So, you know, that, that kind of thing. And I left a dirty taste in my mouth. And granted, I think credits at the community college were like eleven dollars back then, not what it is now or even at any other university. But, you know, I think nowadays, the kids and the parents would be a little bit more upset if they thought like, hey, we thought this was going to completely just take over, and you didn't get the credit for it. You're supposed to graduate earlier. You have these credit hours, right? Why didn't you get that? And so I just want to be, um, a little bit more clear. And so I just want to be a little bit more clear so that we can make sure our students, our parents understand fully, like, hey, you're not, you know, this is only locked into here or here. And there can be some, you know, let's put an asterisk by it or something and say, it cannot count in some places, but you need to kind of do the work yourself maybe or something to figure that out. Just for complete transparency.
So we are really transparent with our students because as you've identified, we have dual credit courses with Oakden, we have dual credit courses with Loyola, and the possibility of dual credit courses with Northeastern. And so that is something that is said to students upfront. And as Ms. Claus identified, even with our AP students as well, the increase in dual credit and popularity has increased. So it's more widespread and there is more acceptance in more colleges and universities. But again, there's always that asterisk of they may or may not accept your credit. But it does ensure that the student is on their transcripts. When it says that they took a dual credit course, it's still saying that they have that experience. So that's still going to benefit them. And college prep courses, the students are already enrolled in them. This is just going to be an added benefit to what they're already doing.
So I have a follow-up question to that. So do local colleges approach us if they see that they have a lot of students that are coming out of District 219? Do they come back and say, hey, maybe we could get into a partnership and roll out a dual credit? So is this something that they come to us for or is it something that we go to? Or is it a two-way communication?
It's a two-way communication.
Okay, okay. Wasn't sure how that exactly got done. And then my second question is with NEIU being a state university, it seems almost natural that other state universities of Illinois would accept it as well. So, and you know, how would you approach that kind of a campaign effort? I don't know. Or would you?
So it'd be hard, you know, to say for certain because again, it would differ. You know, U of I might look differently and that kind of thing. So we would just really promote the use of our College Resource Center. They've been extremely helpful and they can kind of pull up the charts and map out for students what's going to count, which we think is, is good as well because they need to take that initiative and they need to look at what, you know, we can't come in with all the answers. So they have to do some of that searching on their own too.
It's a good question. There's been a lot of legislation. I know 37 states now have legislation. It's about advanced placement, but it's still, the way legislation's written, it applies in a lot of the states that your state university, if it gives credit, the university system does. So 37 states have said any advanced placement course with a score of three or better will get credit at all public schools in that state. So as states, and you know more, kind of bring it under, you're seeing that more and more where any university, college in that state is kind of sharing.
Yeah, the biggest thing right now, I need to put out the Articulation Agreement. And so universities are jumping on that. You can't transfer English 101 across. So if you're getting your dual, you're, you're getting 101 at the high school level. I think Willing High School is a nice example of some of this where they sort of, they sort of mapped backwards from the Articulation Agreement and started plugging it into their junior, senior curriculum. So if those students are advancing more and more, seeing this more and more across the state where students are graduating with their associate's degree, and then those credits, it sort of sit under that agreement, they can transfer the associate's degree to, to one of the universities that are sort of on that list. But I mean, you're, you're right. It's a both and thing because there's the teachers and there's, are you credentialed to teach this? Are you not? And who's teaching it?
That's why it's such a gray area.
It's a gray area. So you, the district should have credentialed folks, university can have folks, and it's a weird balance. But it's worth sort of finding and you doing this that way with Oakden and some of the schools already where you can say, hey, let's plant the seed for one or two courses and see how we grow.
Right.
Which is what I'm seeing in the teams here, so that's good.
Awesome.
That was my only question for the English department.
Joe, did you have a question as well?
Yeah. So I just want to start off by saying that I want to thank our Superintendent and our fellow board members and admin because this is probably the most robust and best discussion we had about curriculum since I've probably been on this board. But I don't want to belabor the point, I, too, already our, our board members mentioned it. I really think that a more formal policy of discontinuing obsolete or courses that are being cannibalized by other newer courses should definitely be in the process so that the board can actually not only vote on new courses, but also get a handle in terms of our overall course catalog. There's so many benefits of having an efficient course catalog, just streamlining the courses so that teachers really don't have to have, you know, there's, there's many opportunities there.
Yeah, and I, I think the timing for that is different. I do think that the dissociating the two actually makes sense. I've been in places before where it's, if you propose a new course from a department, you have to eliminate a course from a department. What happens is that actually stifles creativity because people are, well, you have infighting amongst the teachers within the department frankly. So one of the things I've always said, because I've been accused of canceling a lot of courses over the years, and I always say the same thing, I've never canceled a course. Kids do because they don't pick it. And so I think the natural timing for that kind of thing, and as, as Sandra has talked about with, and the curriculum directors, we just, I began talking this with them last week and with Sandra previously then, with Bridgette. I think that as we see, what courses do kids take? Okay, and what courses still exist in the course catalog? It's at that point that then we can look at it and so you're kind of catching up that following year of, okay, why isn't it? What does the drop rate during the year look like? You know, we get signups, but what's, okay, this many people said they were going to. What's it like in October? What's it like in April? What's the five-year drop rate look like? But with COVID, we have to go earlier than that. And then really, as you, as you said, sunset those courses that are still in our course catalog and listen. It's cool to have a robust course catalog. It's great to say to parents, look, this is like a college catalog. But it's not if kids think, well, I can take this class, this class, this class. But because we're so cannibalized, we're setting up eight courses to have eight kids sign up for it and they're not really running that course and then they're getting a second choice. So it's almost like a truth in advertising. So I completely agree with you. And it does follow through with, what do we stand for? What are we looking at for the future? What are those things that really, we have to make high schools so the kids are excited to go to it? What are they excited about? Entrepreneurship. You know, what are we doing in that area? Engineering, what are we doing in those areas? How are we talking about business in high school where they used to be kind of, okay, we have that, but okay, what does that mean? How does that tie to English? How does coding tie into history and into English? I mean, we've got to get rid of this kind of STEM separating and, okay, because that's not, the world our kids are going into doesn't have those clean separations anymore. So we've got to make sure our departments are working together and that we really have that vision of the graduate, that they've already worked so hard on producing, okay, what's that look like by courses now? So I, I'm very excited about this work. I think it's great. But I like curriculum instruction. Funny being a superintendent that way.
All right. I think we're good with English, right? Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we're good with all of it.
Everybody else is like, no, they're good. They just keep them there, right?
Okay, next we have Equity.
And I want to thank Juana for bringing this course forward with the English department, Stories of the African Diaspora. And we've talked about this because there's a, this, this field of study is obviously expanding. And I've, you know, there's a new, it's being piloted now. There's a new advanced placement course, advanced, advanced placement African-American studies and culture. And that's, actually, it's going to be rolled out in DC at the, at Smithsonian formerly in the spring. I'd love for us to be a pilot district, but they have parameters that we don't meet as far as pilot district goes. But that's something that in the future I see us moving towards. This is a good precursor to that. I think that this is a good start. And there's a lot of rich courses that are out there. That's the other thing with these courses. We don't need to reinvent the wheel with every course. You know, there's some great examples out there. People asked me when I was a history department supervisor, what did I do when I was looking at new courses? I went to the universities, looked at book lists and figured out, okay, what are people assigning in this subject area? How do I steal from introductory college-level courses? What's the current scholarship in this area? So I, I, I don't know. I just want to thank Juana for this and this certainly meets a student request, as does the Avid course too.
Thank you so much Superintendent Moore and hello everyone. Welcome, Board Member Flink. Along with the English department, students and members of the English department really just came from, hey, why not do it again? And where that came from is the Asian Literature Studies course. That was really an inspiration where students in the district were just like, hey, you know, what about stories for Black students? And then we, through conversations, it expanded to the African diaspora for twofold. One, since that AP course will be coming, that will focus on the African studies, why not have a course that would lead up to that? And so along with that, the African diaspora would include all the, I hate to say it this way, but all the ways that people were dropped off after slavery. And you see where their rich culture went beyond any deficits to thrive and be here as you see today. So we have the Hispanic Afro, so Afro-Hispanic diaspora, or they're mentioned in diaspora. We have African-American, African, Caribbean, Black, and so forth. And the goal of the course is to bring in a contemporary voice and to bring the story beyond slavery. So beyond the enslavement of African-American people and African, people from the African diaspora. So I don't know if you had any questions? I'm always open to those.
So does this get an English credit?
It does, it does. The pathway is pretty similar to my first year in the district where there was a partnership with the English department. English teachers look at, looked at it, so forth. And that's where we got the social justice and equity course. And then you both, you all know that I worked in the English department prior to moving from Director of Equity to Chief Equity Officer. So, you know, I'm going to always have a heart for English, so sorry about my bias I set myself.
I told her I thought it should be in the history department, but it's okay.
There are some op-eds in there. I used to teach social studies, so a little bit everything. But it's not just me. I'm, I'm naming the reference points, but there was so much feedback. Like if you saw the, all the different versions, even to the point where we presented to Cabinet, there were still final versions that were being added to just get the most up-to-date curriculum included.
Can you explain, I mean, that's the only question I have about that one course. I have a couple of questions about the other one where, for instance, the Avid Public Speaking for grades nine and 10. I mean, does that replace just regular public speaking? And is that what that basically is intent of?
Yes, you'll see it listed as a new course, but it's because it's a change to the graduation requirements. So there are currently five courses that count for public speaking within our course book.
So it's just a revised course, not a new course, right?
Yeah, it would be, yes.
Okay.
So it's simply the same information, but we're counting it towards a public speaking option.
Public speaking. And then what about for the other course, the honors credit for Avid 11 and 12? Can you explain that one to me? And is that also, it seems like they're all under either humanities or in English. Is this also under humanities or is it?
Uh, no, Avid acts as a separate department. So Avid would be under Equity, whereas the other course, the diaspora, was a, a collaboration with the English department. But the Avid is not just a course, it's an elective, so it's a system for learning. And so under that system of learning, no FTE changes. There is simply recognizing the rigor that's included in it, which is taking AP courses. It is the advanced discussion options, it's Socratic seminars and things such as that. So they're doing the work anyway, so why not give them the credit according to the work they're doing? And along with that, on our site teams, we have counselors, both of our principals, our assistant principals, Dr. Adagin. We have teachers who are representatives from each department, so it was vetted.
Sure, I mean, I just only ask because Avid is somewhat of a newer kind of acronym, right? And a newer thing that we're talking about. So just wondering, you know, how the colleges or other schools or other, wherever, how they view that to be and what that looks like and, and the whole meaning of, I got to plug a square hole into that square peg, right? So just to make sure that, you know, where it's following is the only question I had. Thank you.
Oh, no problem.
I just wanted to say congratulations and I'm super excited for all the students who get to elect these classes. They're amazing and thank you for all your hard work. Equity is a big deal at our district and I am always really thrilled to see more Equity classes added on. So thank you for all the hard work that you guys put into that.
Thank you as well.
Is it? Oh.
Oh, yes.
So when looking through these classes, I, I noticed that like a lot of the teachers that were in democratic classroom were really involved in creating all these different courses. So really excited to see how taking it a next level.
Thank you for noticing that. It's that leadership aspect. The democratic classroom course is an empowerment for staff. And I can't take credit for that. That was something that I heard from Dr. Adagin. We did some research on it and then we brought in Chris Fontana. And then the teachers who have been involved have been very, very active and vocal in leadership.
I'm just waiting for the math department to come up, honestly. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
They do Equity too now.
We have Fine and Applied Arts first.
I know, I know.
People excited for math. Look at you two back there. That's a.
Maybe you guys can help me with the new math. I don't get new math.
I heard they're going back to the old math.
Are they?
That's what I heard.
I hope to God. I see just lines everywhere. Just do this, don't add, don't, don't do that.
I'm Andy Sinclair. I'm the new Director of Fine and Applied Arts at Niles North.
I'm P A Ford. I direct the Fine and Applied Arts at Niles West.
And we're really excited about this class tonight. This is something that, when it was proposed to us, our first thought was, why haven't we had this for years? This is actually, it's strange to be in the Fine and Applied, talking about intro to education and leadership in Fine and Applied Arts. Number one, we're really good at leadership. But second of all, in our applied arts section, we have early childhood courses that really focus on from birth to about age six or seven is about as high as they go. We have nothing past that. Those courses are often offered for sophomores, juniors, and seniors. So we have no class on the book to inspire what we all have chosen to do for our profession. So at a time when teachers are at a shortage across the nation, we should be promoting what we do and showing students the idea of what teaching can do and how leadership is a form of teaching. So even for those students who think, I don't ever want to be a teacher, but I want to be a football coach, we know that the best coaches are teachers themselves. We also are stealing from others because many of our colleagues at other schools have already started a course like this. So we want to take what works from those schools and make it the best we can.
Do you have any questions for us?
Can we have more of these?
Yes, is the answer, yeah.
That's the plan.
We'll see every year. That sounds great.
We'll just give you guys like a thumbs up, you know?
You want to say something?
He's going to talk about history.
I have a comment. I just think this is really fantastic. The school that I'm at, two years ago, they have a CTE Education Academy with like specifically thinking about the pipeline to add more BIPOC teachers. And so, I don't know, I just really excited to have students who are excited about education. There's a lot of other great examples out there in the Chicago Public Schools too and other suburbs and some.
And this could be the change to make if we teach our students to become what we want them to be. 20 years from now, we could be sitting with a faculty that actually represents our student population. So this is the first step towards that.
Yeah, think about the pipeline, like, you know, all our student, our students have the answers. You know, how are we continuing to nurture that leadership? And also think if people are interested in informal education too, so different, different ways. So thank you.
Also, I guess this is a question more for Dr. Adagin, but everybody on your staff as well. A few years ago, we changed our course curriculum to inquire, our, our mission statement to also inquire about career readiness and all those things. And we've given them kind of pathways in our course catalogs about if you wanted to become an electronical engineer, for instance, you want to kind of generally look at these courses and do this. And it's been several years, I think, since we've kind of launched that program. Do we still remind our students or go over that yearly, like every semester or whatever it is that we tell our incoming freshmen or even sophomores and juniors, like, hey, guys, don't forget, if you want to do this, this is kind of the way we want to kind of guide you in saying, this is your kind of, you know, guidepost to say, hey, you need to be looking at these classes, these courses, maybe doing these extracurriculars and, and going to there. I see a lot of heads shaking, so I'm assuming it's yes. Thank you. That's, that's all I was asking.
Yeah, that really, this is something that we struggle with and we get a lot of comments from our community. from our community about, you know, having a more diverse staff inside our buildings, and I think this is, like you were saying, career pathways, this is the pathway to create that, that pipe, so thank you very much for all the hard work that you guys do, and I look forward to having more of these classes added, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wish we had some ominous music, right? Like, dun, 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 what are you giving us a 8-8 tie for?
I didn't say their name for added drama.
Mysterious and suspenseful.
And you thought calculators were exciting, here we go. So what we are here to do, and Mr. Moore alluded to it, is to present to you what my father would call a better mousetrap. We have a currently existing course structure that we plan on keeping and continuing with, called the Extension Courses, that helps students in our core-level courses, Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, assist them in achieving those learning targets to the best of their ability. Students, as ninth graders, can come into our program and be identified by their eighth grade teachers, their PSAT scores, as potentially needing additional help in math. Over the last five or six years that Joe and I have been here, that conversation has shifted from a mandatory entrance into this program with no other options to a, is it worth it? Is it more of a cost-benefit analysis? And what we have here is a three-day option that allows a student to do both. So for instance, if a student came in playing band, wanted to take a foreign language, and had all of these kind of aspirations for elective work, what they would have to do if they were recommended for a math extension would be to weigh, what can I take, what is more important for my future, and things like that. What Joe and I would like to do is to take advantage of our science lab schedule, where science labs meet two periods a day, we would like to take those extension courses and slot them into the remaining three periods a week for science, opening up an entire row in their course schedule. That is the gist of kind of the structural impact here.
Yeah, we have several issue, current issues with extension, we're hoping to address them with this proposal. Students currently, it currently takes an entire period of their school day, it's very, very difficult for students to enter extension during the start of the school year once they need it. By putting extension opposite science lab three days a week, we already know where all the students are who already need help, so I'm, we track students right now, I've got students who could be added to extension, who would need, benefit from the support, we currently have almost no way to add those students. If we put it opposite science lab, those are three days a week, they're already in a study hall, we just go collect them. When we want to exit them right now, we basically can only exit them at semester, then they most often just exit to a regular study hall. Now, if they're not on their schedule at the beginning of registration, they can take a whole additional course, we go collect them from their study hall, then when they don't need it anymore, we send them back to study hall, and there's no impact on the rest of their student's schedule, the rest of their day, nothing else has to change. It allows us to flexibly enter and exit students, it removes the credit, we have an issue with it being transcribed right now, this is an issue because it signals to any college/university, anybody who looks at that transcript, that student needed additional support because it's transcribed, it shows up, so we have an equity issue there. We then have a grading issue, because on the transcript, we have to grade them, I teach extension, grading extension is kind of whatever, because it doesn't really make sense, a lot of different people try a lot of different things, but grading extension overall is an issue, we would eliminate the grade. It just, it solves a lot from, from our perspective, it solves a lot of the issues that we currently have with it, while still allowing us to service students who need help and give them that help on a flexible basis. I'm sure we want to talk about the 8-8 tie. I would like to point out before we do that, that I was not, I was not, I was not present at the CSSI meeting, I just want to point out that there are no no votes, these are all votes to recommend or delay, so I just want to emphasize that there were zero votes to not go forward to this at all.
Great answer.
Can I ask a quick question? For math extension, is that considered to be remedial math? Is that what we're kind of talking about?
It is, it is not, so, excuse me. So students enroll in our core-level, Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, they're with their peers, their peers, unless they are in the extension course, which is a second course on top, would have no idea that they're in an extension, we don't do things like, hey, extension kids, raise your hand, come this way with me, we don't, that's, that's not something we do.
But that question gets to the root of it, like, for a college, it would look like that.
Yeah, that's...
And, and it's, it's, and they can't get out of it, like, we're guessing that these kids are gonna have this issue, and then if they don't, and things are successful, we're waiting till the semester break to say, okay, you can come out now. So it's actually sunsetting a course and sliding it into where it fits better, where we can have immediacy with getting kids the help they need right away.
Sure.
It, it allows us to treat the, so to go back to the original question, this is a course that is identified as a student might need, the might is a big key here, because as Joe alluded to, we have students that we flag, it's October, I'm teaching Algebra I, the core-level course this year, I have kids who all of a sudden are pinging up on my radar as, oh boy, this kid needs help, and I don't have a way to do that as cleanly as we would here.
Yeah, I mean, and, and going to the next topic, and I know Superintendent Moore had talked about this, is just because of that correlation of just the way the wording of it is, math extension, I myself even think of that as, is that remedial math, is that, is, are we going into this? And just because of, and the way you guys described the, the topic of, you know, they might need a little bit of help of this and this, and to come in, in and out, in and out, but that's kind of what remedial math was doing, and so, then it can, then the question to me is, I, I mean, just hearing that and having that conversation, I mean, I'm, I'm already thinking, I'm the other eight for delay, until we change the name in a sense, because that is a misleading, to me at least, it seems, a misleading, and not just to me alone, it seems like eight other people might have, for what other reasons, why they wanted to delay it, have that kind of conversation as well, so, was that part of the conversation in the delay as a reason why it came to that?
So, so the course name and its existing structure was not part of the deliberation or part of the concern, and I'll, I'll speak honestly about some of the friction with the delay votes. We have, we have teachers, especially at West, that was a number of the dissenting or delaying votes, I should say, who have worked so extremely hard on this five-day model, they have made the course their own, they hold on to it, it's their baby, they don't want it to change. Joe and I, as leaders, are recognizing the needs of our students outside of the math department, and we're saying, hey, it would be really great if that kid could play the tuba and be better at math, and that's where, where we're really coming from at this. Again, I was not present for the conversations, maybe Dr. Adagene can speak a little bit more to that, but that is generally the idea that we perceive.
Yeah, that is definitely something that came up. Another thing that came up was also the concern that currently, that science study hall period is being used, and so there were questions about what is going to happen then with the needs of the students in science. So that is something that also came up, and the minutes for the CSSI meeting are public, so these are minutes that you have access to. The only thing that I would say is that, you know, it's important for you to look at those, but also keep in mind that not every department is represented, so you're going to hear perspectives from, and I wouldn't even say that one person, I don't think it would be fair to say that one person represents the whole department either necessarily, they, they certainly can, but I think that in reading those minutes, I received feedback, to be honest with you, from the Science Department, saying that statement has more to it, so as you read those, please consider those things as well.
If I could, one of the things I, I do want to, no matter what you decide at the next meeting, I just want to say, this is the kind of clever leadership that's not just myopic, but looking at a large picture, that we need to really look at, how do we best meet the needs of these kids? Because these are real kids that are gonna be making a course decision for next year. This, in effect, opens up another course for them, because it's taking away a crack course, so that concern, Dr. Ko, about, well, this still stays in the transcript, it doesn't, it shifts that, it's not there the way it is now. So that name problem goes away with this change.
Yeah, we, we, we kicked around, we, we, just to follow up on the naming issue, I mean, we kind of kicked around, like, what are we gonna call this? And as is alluded to here, like, in the end, it's not even really gonna matter, it's just gonna be an internal reference, it's not gonna be on their transcript, it's gonna be on their schedule, so that they can be marked present, like, we're still gonna take attendance, but we kind of kicked around, like, what are we gonna call this, and we just sort of eventually stopped talking about the name, because it almost doesn't matter, like, what do you want, like, math help, like, what do you want to call it, like, it's, it's the same, it's the same thing. For the purposes of our internal conversations, it just makes it easier to talk about it, because it's like the evolution of the support.
Sure, and I totally get that concept, and I think that's a great idea.
And how many students are in this math extension on average?
It, it tapers off, based, due to the work of our teachers, it tapers off as students get older, so we run our largest number, it's tailored to the course, we have Algebra I extensions, we have Geometry extensions, we have Algebra II extensions. The number of sections at both buildings tapers down as the students get older. We have students who exit for a year and then come back, we have students who, when I meet with them every semester, beg me to keep them in the course because they know how valuable it is to them, and when I explain to them, you could be taking something else, they see the value there, so there's definitely, like, anecdotal evidence in, in support of this as well.
Yeah, I would say at North, we run ballpark, 150 to 160 students.
Wow, okay.
For all three combined.
Right, right.
Per year, in that neighborhood.
That's amazing, that's a really good, that's a good, great number, thank you.
See, that's kind of why I feel like it's a remedial math thing, as you talk about it, kind of dies out as they go up and matriculate up, right? Where they're coming from that transition from that junior high, eighth grade, to that freshman year, it seems like they need the most of that, right? And, and so that's just why we're trying to, I, I wanted to see the whole 30,000-foot view, where, how that ties in, and we can just make it a streamlined flow for our kids to get educated and, and have the proper tools and equipment and everything else that they need to be successful. And so, how do we combine that with something that looks like CFC and all those other things, where they're doing the same curriculum, common core things that we do in high school, to be able to be on the same path, right? This is where I get a little bit confused, because I've been here long enough to kind of hear that CFC, and that's kind of what it reminds me of, a little reminiscent of, and I feel like it's a little, it might have shifted off a little bit, and that's great, so that's why I just get a little confused in that, in that aspect of it, but it, it makes a lot of sense.
Right, I just want to point out about CFC, I don't think, I don't know if, you know, I don't think we would agree, though, that it's shifted off, they work directly with our directors here, so that work is continuing.
Yeah, and that's why I get confused a little bit, because it seems like it's kind of in and out of kind of both areas, and it's like, it kind of sounds similar, but it's different, and so that's where I'm just kind of grasping it, but I, I think it's a great, I would love to hear more about it.
I'm, I'm really, I just want to say that, I, I understand your concern, but I think, given our student population and how many students we have in our district that simply cannot afford extra help on their own, I think this is a great offering, so I, I think there's a need there, and we should just, we should continue with it, as long as we have a need to add that extra support for our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
See, it wasn't that bad, guys, right?
I want to keep talking about it. This is really...
It wasn't that bad.
You want to keep talking about it, or you're gonna go home?
All right, we have science next.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Amy Lefever, Science Director at Niles West High School. Good evening. Oh, did I need to?
Where's her Niles North counterpart?
Well, at 10 o'clock at night, when you have a one-year-old child, take care of. It's a little, yeah, stressful.
Yeah, she did inform me that she would not be able to.
I'm just kidding. No questions, though, from me?
Yeah, I, I don't have, I, did you have, like, a summary maybe of?
So, the, the course that we're asking for public speaking credit for is SERES, it's called STEM Inquiry Research.
Okay.
This course, when we created it, had all the components of public speaking in it, our, our students work hard to compete, they have competitions at the regional science fair, they do competitions at state, we're also well-known for the international science fair as well by Intel over the years, so we've had quite a few competitors and winners that come out of there. So all the things that we've been doing for the last, oh goodness, over 10 years, we've been always thinking we should have public speaking credit, and it aligns to all the, the state standards as well, so now, we're at a point where we said, we better speak out and ask.
And how long have you guys had public speaking? I mean, it says that it's a revision right now, and I'm trying to look into like a season, but it's...
Well, public speaking has been going on...
So you tagged this course, okay.
But this is outside our department, of course, so we're a science course asking for public speaking credit, graduation credit, yeah.
Yeah, so then, students who take this course, they would meet their public speaking requirement, which is an in-district requirement, they wouldn't have to take a separate public speaking course, that's the idea.
So do we.
Just a comment, like, I just think it's really innovative, so I've never seen science, public speaking, it makes sense, building, science communication, science talk, and, you know, like, the pandemic that, science communication was a struggle, so, starting students earlier on, and in addition for competitions, but, you know, future career opportunities, and this is amazing, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned even that during the pandemic, because our teachers worked hard to develop online virtual competitions, and so even, despite all of that, our students were still able to compete virtually at the regional, as well as the state, and, and that credit really goes to the, the West and North SERES teachers who organized the whole thing, so.
Very nice, congratulations.
Thank you.
Great work.
Thanks.
There's no correlation between this public speaking and the Avid public speaking?
No.
And the students would be in the same path? They could be.
They could be, yeah.
But they could take one or the...
And it's not, well, no, you could, because this is, this is just saying that it's, it's, it's acknowledging that if a student takes this course, we have a public speaking requirement as a graduation requirement, so this is one of those courses you can take that meets that. It's not a public speaking course per se, just public speaking is an integral part of this course, as it is in those other courses across disciplines that allow students to meet the requirement through that course. So you could do Avid and do this, and that, that may very well be appropriate.
Awesome.
That was my question, too.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Social Studies.
You stayed all this time just for a name change?
Well, let's make sure it was worth his while, we'll ask him a whole bunch of questions.
I mean, the names are tricky in these kinds of courses, if, I mean, Dr. Ko, maybe you were on the board when we added, when we discussed using the term Latinx, from Latin American, because we have a Latin, African and Latin American Studies course, and now, you know, we changed that and used that term Latinx a couple of years ago. This is Asian-American Studies we're talking about, and when the Asian-American Literature Course was added in English, we had kids confused of which class they were signing up for.
So now they know?
Trying to make it more obvious.
I'm just glad it's not Oriental Studies or something like that, I mean, I just, I just don't understand how that works, yeah, I, I mean...
Labels matter.
Yeah, sometimes, you know, but, yeah, I mean, so that was the only reason, and so it seems like they'll understand the difference of that name change, huh?
Sure, and you know, we actually have the teacher, the architect of the course, he turns down media requests, but he's willing to come here, because I don't know if you remember last spring...
Mr. Chan, yeah, you want to give us, your thoughts on it, because you're the...
But he's certainly here, if you want to hear anything from him.
Of course, love to.
I'm just really happy I can walk right now.
We're just tossing a little mini '97 reunion right now.
There we go. It's good, it's good to see everybody, thank you for having us. Yeah, so part of it is the inception of the class, which the board approved in 2016, Asian-American Studies was created for the Social Studies Department, it's an Ethnic Studies course, which I've taught at North, and then eventually it was popular enough that we ran it over at West in 2019. And then in 2020, we collaborated with the English Department, and they began a course called Asian-American Literature, and now there's like a slight discrepancy, because there's an Asian-American Literature course, but the Social Studies course is called Asian-American Studies. So we do believe that the classes have a connection to one another because of the history of Ethnic Studies, so we still wanted both courses to have a tie to Asian-American Studies because of the history of how that came to be, so we thought Asian-American Studies- dash History for Social Studies would be appropriate, and then Asian-American Studies- dash Literature would be appropriate for the English Department.
Is the class still growing? I mean, it seems like it took about three years to get to Niles West, but just that growth period and the time that it takes to grow a course, which was new, because I remember when we did that...
Sure. Sure.
And just, it's always been curious as to how it's been going and how it's been growing and it seems like.
At North, it's kind of ebbed and flowed, this year I have a full section first semester. Um, we've hired a teacher at West that's now teaching two sections over there. Last year I taught at Weston Travel. Uh, we had, uh, the last two years we've had twelve and then thirteen students at West. Uh, this year we have two sections and I believe it's like fifty-five. So I think I did a better job at West than I did at North.
And and we've scheduled the classes, the literature and issue classes next to each other, which I think has allowed them to be paired well and complement with the enrollment.
Kind of going off of what you just said, do you, do you, do you maybe see why there's a discrepancy of like fifty-five kids at Niles West versus the twelve and thirteen section in one section at North? Or is there, is it just, it's just like you said, ebbed and flows and it just changes for?
It ebbs and flows, I think most of our enrollment is seniors that that have uh, a desire to take another elective or they still have to take a social studies elective and they thought this was an interesting one to take. We do have some sophomores that take it. So for example, I taught freshmen last year, um, and, uh, as a result, like five of them took the class this year with me as a sophomore. That would preclude them from taking it again junior and senior year. So it kind of, it just depends on when the students choose to take it.
Almost takes, took it four years to figure it out, the way our schedule works. But there's two spots in the kid's schedule, their sophomore, their senior year. So if a bunch of them take it the sophomore year, we'll get an enrollment dip two years later.
Let's see, okay.
So.
That makes sense, yeah.
It shifts.
That's just the way that, the space in the schedule for a social studies elective is sophomore or senior year, so.
Great.
And juniors because they take a full year of US history.
Yeah.
I only have one junior this year, this semester.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that insight.
And it's, it will never be called Oriental Studies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a comment, I just think that this, um, this, the Asian-American Studies History, Asian-American Studies Literature is very innovative and also like with the Teach Act that like, that D two nineteen is like the forefront and the leaders like to the rest of Illinois and, um, hopefully the students are too, so really amazing.
I was only partially kidding about the media request thing. I mean, Mr. Chan is seen as the, the person to talk to about this in our state.
Absolutely, I've been watching and, um, trying to promote within Chicago Public Schools and so, yeah, I see both, yeah, I know, I know, I know. And and I see the examples that, um, uh, teachers have, have written for other teach, D two nineteen teachers have written for the rest of the state. So I appreciate it, it doesn't go unnoticed.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Well, thank you very much, we love the name change, by the way.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes.
Okay, and our, um, last department, World Languages.
Several years ago, a colleague of mine was opposed to changing from foreign language to world language for the very reason that you end up at the end of the alphabet at the end of the night. Uh, I I feel her pain this evening.
Maybe next year we can start reverse alphabet order.
Yes.
Or you can talk to Dr. Adagino about that.
Our, our first proposal is Advanced Spanish Heritage. We have a strong, uh, presence in both buildings in our heritage program. Our current model allows for one year for students to work on their skills in Spanish. And then from there, they've been progressing on to, uh, either typically a fourth-year regular class or a fourth-year honors class or into, uh, AP Spanish Language and Literature. For some of our students, that's been a mismatch, um, because they're not necessarily academically ready to jump into an AP course as a sophomore. And for some of our students, well, for any of our heritage students who land in a regular class, uh, it is, it is a definite mismatch for them. It's a challenge for them to take the skills that they possess and use them in an English-dominated, Anglo-dominated kind of environment. Um, we're proposing the Advanced Heritage Class in order to fill that gap. But addition to helping them grow their skills in Spanish, we're adding additional materials to allow them to become, to to study those things that they wouldn't necessarily have studied, but that they're going to need as a bilingual, bicultural person in the United States, trying to advance those skills in Spanish. We're very excited about it. In fact, one of our colleagues at one of our sender districts talked about her child's own experience as a, her child being the third generation and how she felt that this course would have met her family's need and allowed her child to excel versus feeling uncomfortable. So that's kind of the gist of that particular proposal. It's been something discussed in the department for a while, we brought it to fruition post-pandemic.
I'm going to make a comment, I I really like the idea, congratulations on this, to include a language that is second in the United States, uh, and concentrating on the idea of getting these kids familiar with medical, legal and business situations. I think that is so important from several perspectives. One, uh, undocumented students that come to school and their parents might not be able to communicate, that kind of help is not available to them. And I think this is a great, uh, uh, foundation for these kids to be able to talk about the problems that their parents cannot. I think that's part of equity that we're always talking about, right? So everybody, and and in in legal terms too, I think that's fantastic. Uh, congratulations, I'm really impressed with this, very important.
Thank you, anybody else have any comments or questions? That was an easy one.
We could have asked them if we want to talk about the Assyrian language, I haven't heard about that.
The second proposal that we have for you is the Assyrian Language Proposal. This would be beginning a sequence of studies. We're proposing, obviously, Level One to begin with. The intent is to create a full four-year program. Um, as we've heard this evening, this proposal comes from the community with strong backing. Um, and moving forward with that, we have lots of new areas. We will be forging a new path for, uh, not only our community, but for our students, but in the world of world language education in the United States. That is both daunting and exciting. And so, uh, we will, as a team, figure out what we need to do to make that possible. As I've shared with the department, um, if, as the proposal moves forward, uh, it is on everyone's best interest to create the best program we can. We want to serve as a model and we're going to do whatever it takes to be, to develop the strongest program we possibly can.
I, this is more than ever, I feel like thanking you for hiring me so I could be a part of this. I mean, that crowd of people, kids, families here that had asked me with me, they were one of the first groups I met with, couldn't have been more welcoming. And, um, just to be a part of this and, a- and I agree with you saying that. The only trepidation is, we got to be great because we've got to be a role model to every other district in the country. But how do we create something like this? So that, but that's a great excitement to have and to be able to meet the needs of a community and, you know, um, we've just had so many discussions about the excitement for this. I I'm thrilled to, um, be associated with it, it just, just thank you all.
Can I say something also? So a- as a, as a, somebody who knows a little bit about history, especially ancient history, uh, and the Assyrian history in the Middle East, um, the only university probably in the world that teaches Assyriology actively and Matthew Stoper just retired and the University of Chicago hasn't hired anyone yet, and I hope they do. One of the issues that, uh, the Assyrian community has had in California, where I'm from, and also here, when we moved here, I noticed that at a college level, uh, there is a desire by Assyrian students that want to take Assyrian because it's never been offered before. And the challenge is, at the university level, it's very challenging to get new courses on the books. And I'm very, very happy and very impressed with the amount of work the Assyrian community has done. With your leadership and Naema's help and everybody else in the community, I'm very happy that this is, uh, this is going to offer a lot of things down the line. I, I'm thinking twenty years, thirty years, we're going to have Assyriologists from the Assyrian community, actually. You know, writing their own history, that's so, so important.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I have two questions, uh, I agree, I think this is absolutely fantastic. I do wonder, to your point, uh, Mr. Moore, the sort of two, two, two parts, sort of, to make this great, it sounds like you're setting some guardrails for expectations. And, and so I'm wondering, within those guardrails, you know, what, like, how are we mapping, where, where and how are we leveraging resources to map this back from particular learning standards? To your point with the college piece is sort of being in flux in some of our areas. And then what resources are you going to ensure are are sort of being brought to the table so that we hit the great mark? Those are two questions I have.
So I do want to, once again, acknowledge all of the people and all of the resources that have been, um, tapped into to ensure that this, this course, uh, could come before you today. Um, I do want to remind everybody that it was a year ago and as you heard today, it's been more than a decade, actually, that this has been in the works. And so the community has used, um, resources available to them from the Assyrian community. I do want to also say that the proposal that you see here today is a result of participation from our World Languages experts as well. So we are using the resources, um, primarily within our community, we are collaborating. Um, that's another resource that I do want to point out as well, and we will continue to do that. As to what standards, this was modeled using, uh, looking at our other, um, curricula from World Languages. So this does not deviate from that. So we're talking about actual standards that, you know, I do want to say we have, um, an expert in that, sitting right here, who can speak to that as well, um, but we did model that and we certainly started with standards as we do with every single course.
The world readiness standards for language learning apply to all languages. They were written in such a manner, um, that they can apply to languages of various backgrounds. Um, I intend to contact, once the proposal has been approved, I don't want to jump the gun, right? Um, but I intend to contact my, uh, my network nationally and attempt to make sure that we're building things, uh, properly, that I'm getting advice and consent. It's a brave new world for me. As many in the room, I didn't understand anything that Mr. Sargul read to us. But it's really important for us that we continue to look at developing, as we do in the language community, proficiency standards, that we are focusing on what students are able to do with the language, that we are building and following those, those standards, uh, and and modeling along the way. It's also essential that we bring staff on board that have the background that are able to do that. That is, uh, we have, have had higher standards in hiring and I want to continue to do that. The resources, the community has already shared, there's a community in Australia that has already shared their curricula with us. They've shared, shipped books to us free and those have been used in resources. Clearly, they're not based in those same standards, but there's some carryover that happened. The summer project work, this was, uh, was from the community, but also one of my teachers, um, Mr. Tom Neal, who's teaching, uh, he's a German, French and Spanish teacher, has, uh, been involved in curriculum work for a long period of time. He was instrumental in the summer project, helping build the understanding and then the basic steps moving forward. And we'll continue that process.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Well, I want to say, being in Assyrian myself, I am incredibly grateful to have this under course offering. As you saw tonight from the people that showed up, from all the public comments, there's two things that are super important to Assyrians and one is their language and the other one is their religion. They'll show up in crazy numbers for those two things and rightfully so. For, as many of you have heard, um, this is something that's going to be nationally historic. But even more important to the Assyrian people, it's just being able to have that, that recognition, that ability to be, to be able to be recognized and to be able to be yourself and learn and move forward in a community where, we've lived in communities where nobody's ever acknowledged us or or our culture, our religion, our language. So this was a big deal because of that. Not so much it's historic nationally, but it's just very important and dear to us, um, as a, as a community, living in diaspora. I'd gone to the school, I've had this class, I would have taken it, my daughter went to the school. Had it been not an elective and somebody she thinks she could have gotten a college credit for, she would have taken it as well, she ended up taking something else instead. But when I talked to her about this and told her that this was going to happen, she said, you know what? She goes, I'm going to make sure I live in District two nineteen so my future kids can take that class. So it's a big deal and a lot of future kids will come to this community as a result of that class. So thank you. I will forever be grateful for this, um, this is something that has been a priority for me as a board member. Um, and, um, it's been very emotional. For the past three weeks, I think most of us have been crying at home. Just, and and that is, that is really the fact for, I think, every Assyrian household that you will talk to. So thank you, thank you for the hard work, administrators, board members who have supported me in, um, getting this initiative on the table finally, I appreciate that. Um, and yeah, we look forward to next month in voting on this, so thank you.
All right, thank you for the discussion and, um, as President Abraham just said, we will be bringing these back to you next month for a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Agin.
All right, next, uh, we're going to move on to Client First Contract Discussion and Action. May I have a motion for the Board of Education to approve the Client First Renewal Agreement as presented? May I have a motion, please? Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And do we have anybody for discussion? No, no comments? Okay, can I get a roll call, please?
Member Dr. Lopez?
Yes.
Member Fling?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Noak?
Yes.
Member Dr. Farzany?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. All right, thank you. And then new business, does anybody, you have your hand up, okay, so go ahead.
I'm so, I'm so sorry to, we're looking at the time, but reading up on all these courses, uh, has led me to this proposed new business and I have a statement that I want to share with the fellow, my fellow board members. So, my fellow board members, please let me set the table with some general information. When it comes to retirement accounts such as 401Ks and IRAs, forty-one percent of American workers state that they've never had one. Student loan borrowers in the US owe collectively one point seven five trillion in federal and private student loan debt. Credit card debt hit a record high of nine hundred and thirty billion for Americans, according to the latest data from the Federal Reserve Bank of New York. And the last point, uh, living paycheck to paycheck is now the most common financial lifestyle in the United States. The graduation requirements for D two nineteen students is a function of state of Illinois mandates and the Board of Education. Only fifteen states require students to take a personal finance course before graduating high school. And Illinois, in its wisdom, or lack thereof, is not one of them. Fortunately, D two nineteen currently requires one credit of consumer education. Unfortunately, this amount of consumer education and financial literacy is inadequate. My new business is to ask the Board President Abraham and Superintendent Moore to add to next month's regular meeting agenda, a discussion and action item, to change the D two nineteen graduation requirements of one credit in consumer education to two credits in consumer education and financial literacy. The Board of Education has recently taken courageous steps in changing the D two nineteen mission statement and the direction for our students to be college, to be, to go from college-ready to be career and life-ready through our Career Pats initiatives. This request that I'm proposing is to complete, is in complete alignment with these changes the board made. And it is vital to give all our students, all our students, the skills they need to maximize their opportunities as they leave our institution. Let us help our students become the best financial consumer literate students in the state of Illinois. state of Illinois. I also have, and I'll provide my comments, and I also printed out our current graduation So that's basically the new business I'm asking. I think the data speaks for itself. I think our students, the residents that I speak to clearly state that our students are not financially ready when they leave our institution. And I think it hooves us to consider creating the opportunities for them to have that extra knowledge and embed that into our graduation requirements. And that's my proposal for new business.
All right, thank you.
Could I just have one question about that, just as we plan this out? Just in thinking about it, it's a question of how fluid can we be in looking at this? Because that's, that's absolutely one way of looking at it. Another way would be to look at it as a, almost a public speaking, you know, we have the public speaking requirement, personal finance, so different courses can meet that rather than just a course called personal finance. So that's the question, can we have it where it's a general requirement such as public speaking as opposed to two credits, so that a course, so that AP economics would meet that requirement because of things that go in it? Or you design your U.S. history course where you can do a project which leads, where you talk about inflation, which you can do a project that meets that graduation requirement then? So I'm just questioning how broad before we discuss it next week, so I know the parameters as I talk to Simon Bridget.
And of course, maybe my request of having it next month may be too aggressive, and I understand that.
Yeah.
I want to stay up on the balcony, so the folks who plan the programs and the courses really should delve into it.
Just kind of go piggybacking off that, I mean, I think I like that idea because, you know, just adding one more credit to be required, really, I mean, that goes from one semester to one year, and you're kind of just isolated in that. But like Superintendent Moore was talking about, if you were to be in a U.S. history course and be able to get that where you talk about inflation and the Great Depression and how things happen, and, and to be able to go through a process, I think the more contact you can give our students, the better results that they're gonna get. So whether it's in all different forms and not just in one specific class, I mean, that would be a great way to start off too, just so, you know, some kids won't get it all either, and they won't, they'll just take that minimum requirement, which I believe most of the kids take it in their summer school year, is kind of the way it was. They want to just get it, knock it out of the way so they can focus on their core requirements. So the more, I think the more opportunities we give our kids to have those opportunities, it'll stick in different ways, because some kids are visual learners, some kids learn this way, some kids learn that way, so it might not always hit just in one aspect.
It's certainly a discussion we should be having. I'm not, I'm not trying to put it off at all, I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to think of clever ways to look at it.
To me, the end result is the financial acumen of our students, and if truly they have the ability to understand what consumer debt is and understand what the financial obligations are when they sign contracts, and to understand all the things that all of us kind of take for granted, and fortunately, knowing that firsthand, we have a, a generation that does live paycheck to paycheck and doesn't understand the merits of, of saving and pursuing long-term objectives like that. I don't know if those critical ingredients can be embedded in, in a history class or something. I don't know. And that's where I want to leave it to, to the experts, to, to look at other programs to see who has the best practice in this regard. Because I, I think, as a board, I want to give our kids the best opportunity, and these courses that we just reviewed for the last hour and a half are tremendous examples of that opportunity. But every kid that will leave our institution is gonna have to be financially literate. And I think we need to very much consider how we can up the ante in that regard. And I'm open to discussions to other board members to give their input. But, you know, our, our graduation requirements, and I'm so proud of the fact that we have, we require two credits in fine arts and practical arts. We're a wonderful art school. I'm so proud of our art programs here. Yet I feel that consumer education and financial literacy is on par with that, and that's where I'm saying that I think we should review this and, yeah, with that consideration.
I agree. I have had so many community members and even former students who, after they left, the one thing on their wish list that they had, you know, had expressed to me several times is, I really wish that in high school, I learned something about financial literacy so that I could make better financial decisions when I had graduated and gone on to college. So it is a big deal to students. Even students today will personally tell you that they're just not prepared financially. So how do we, I don't think it's just a District 219 problem, I think it's a nationwide problem. But I think for District 219, you know, having so many students who are from immigrant families who don't have that literacy themselves, they don't have a people to learn it from at home either. So that's a bigger deal, too.
So you're exactly right. In, in my travels through our district, talking to first-generation students that immigrate here, they actually turn out to be the financial advisors for their family. They're the ones that talk to their mom and dad and say, hey, you know what? Let's take some of that money and put it into a 401K. Let's do this, let's do this. You don't have life insurance? Consider it. You don't have auto insurance? Consider it. But that's the, that's, that's, that's the exception, not the rule. And, and I'm hoping that we, as an institution, can instill that knowledge to every student. And that, like I said, I don't, I, I don't know how it will look, but, but I really think that this would be a fundamental improvement for all our students.
I, I think part of what, I forget your name. No, sorry. It's too late. What Joe is saying. Yeah, I mean, it's good to know the history of inflation, what inflation is in a, in a history class, let's say. But I, I even go down to the most basic, how to write a check, or if you should take out a student loan, you know, in your first year in college, you know, before-
Shows your age, no credit rates.
Right. Well, yeah. I mean, knowing, I blew it. But you get the point, though, right? Financial literacy, I think, is really important. I support that. But I think we, we have to be a little bit more innovative, move away from theory to, you know, practical information.
And that's really what I'm getting at, is I want to do it in a practical way. I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying the history course, I'm saying that, does it need to be a full course? Is there a, is there a way to demonstrate? That's, I'm just trying to think of the X number of hours and X number of years, and how do we meet it? Are there clever ways, using the technology, using other means, where there's, during your four years, we're guaranteeing you get the components of it, but where do you get them? That's-
Right.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Again, I apologize for bringing this up at 15-2.
Oh, it's okay, it's okay. We're good. All right, next, we're gonna have the Mr. Moore's report, right?
Yes, as we, as we are reaching the witching hour, don't confuse my brevity with lack of love for my friends from Niles North and Niles West here. You know, it's been a, boy, things go quickly here. Already into October, fall season's wrapping up, couple games left in football at West. Congratulations to the boys and girls golf teams for athletes who qualified for sectionals. Malcolm Villanueva and Cam Budon qualified for the boys team, and Julie Duratsis qualified for the girls team. Just fantastic results. The soccer regionals will be hosted at West Saturday morning, where West, the Wolves, will take on Von Steuben at 10 o'clock Saturday. This past Thursday, an event at West, Niles West alum Olivia Rusek, who plays professional volleyball for Geneva Volley in Switzerland, had her number-one jersey retired. Very exciting. And this past Friday, Niles West Hall of Fame coach and retired teacher Lou Torres, for his contributions to the North, to the Niles West diving program, was recognized with the plaque of accomplishments being hung in the pool. At North, speaking of pools, at Maine East Swim and Dive Dual Meet last week, junior Ava Shauer, Shaver, sorry, broke a 37-year-old Niles North diving record. She scored a 243 to set a new record, and looks to continue to improve heading into conference and sectionals. And the varsity boys soccer team in North has had a tremendous year. They are the number-four seed in the Loaded IHSA sectional, and they do play an exciting brand of soccer. They will host regionals one week from tonight. And congratulating to Quinn Graham, who set the Niles North's single-season scoring mark last Friday. And finally, North versus West girls volleyball this Thursday at North, in an event that also raises awareness and funds for cancer research. Homecoming, big success, really great. It was great to go to the two schools and to see, there is an element, you know, I think having it be away for a while because of COVID and having it back now. I don't know if the kids were more excited, if the staff was more excited for it, but it was great to see so many people get involved. Speaking of financial literacy, one thing that we do do very well here, on Wednesday, September 28th, Niles North hosted the District Financial Aid Night. Over 650 students and parents participated. Jerry Chabriski, the Associate Vice President of Financial Services at Lake Forest College, is the keynote speaker. He's widely considered one of the leading experts in the country in college financial aid and scholarships. Anybody that couldn't attend, that is on our website, you can click on that and get more information about financial aid and scholarships. Thanks to everybody that helped to put that together. And with that, PSATs, October's PSATs, 9th, 10th, 11th graders held October 12th. No school for seniors on October 12th because of PSATs. On October 15th, PSAT 8 for current 8th graders is being held. So with that-
That's a lot of stuff.
It is a lot of stuff. I thought it'd be quicker, but, and I skipped a page.
Oh, my gosh. Well, thank you for your report. All right, committee reports, does anybody have any committee? I don't think we, any committees have really met, have they? Yes, we're gonna, we need to do that, too. Yeah. Yeah. We have a couple that are, we have assignments on, but there's a few that are missing that we need to get people on there. So we'll get that done. Thank you for that. All right, well, with that being said, the Information for FOIA, Freedom of Information Act have been provided, and we're gonna move on to close the session at this point. May I have a motion to, to close the session at 10:50 PM?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you. Okay, may I have a roll call?
Member Dr. Farzany?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Dr. Ko?
Yes.
Member Dr. Lopez? Member Flink?
Yes.
Member Noick?
Yes.
Member Abraham?
Yes. All right, thank you.